Okay, just trying to get the YouTube going and then I'll broadcast and allow the attendees to come in.
And we're, we're gonna have Dr. Brennan go on right after the pledge then, okay?
Even better. Even better.
Okay, Mr. Feinberg, you're live.
Okay, we'll wait for them to settle in for a minute. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 21st Board Business and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. Could we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. Mr. Regal, could you call the roll, please?
Dr. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
I am here, thank you.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Menji?
Here.
Mr. Sinto? Mr. Sinto?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Weedeman?
Here.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Regal. We're gonna rearrange our schedule just a little bit this evening. Dr. Brennan, the Chief Medical Officer and Senior Vice President of the University of Pennsylvania Health Systems, with a board certification in infectious disease and internal medicine, is back as our guest and to accommodate his schedule, we're gonna have him go up first. Dr. Brennan, thanks very much for joining us again. You're on.
My pleasure, Mr. Feinberg. Thank you for having me. I'll start with some background and, and then bring it a little closer to home and give you some conclusions and then take, take some questions. So, as you well know, viral transmission is continuing globally. The US, Brazil, and India are the three leading countries in terms of cases and we're closing in on 7 million now with 200,000 deaths. We're still seeing about 40,000 new cases a day in the United States, although the northeastern United States is doing better than, than most other regions. Since the last time I was here on August 6th, the trends have been positive and fairly consistent week to week with, with some variation. At the time I was last here, community incidence was about 120 cases per 100,000 population. And it's now approximately 40 cases per 100,000 in the township and about 46 in Delaware County. At that time, test positivity was over 5% and now it's just over 3%. In the township, the trend has also been positive as it has been in adjacent jurisdictions such as Marple and, and Upper Darby. In July, we were seeing approximately one new case per day over 30 days, until we saw a bump in late July that was the product of July 4th activity and that stretched into early August, at which time we were seeing about five new cases a day. Over the last 30 days, however, that number has been cut more than in half and we're now seeing just over two new cases per day on average. It's noteworthy that in the county, we now have nearly 1,000 persons between birth and 19 years of age who have tested positive for COVID. In late June and into July, that number was less than 200. So we've seen nearly a five-fold increment in school age, in school age cases, while there has not been a five-fold increase in cases overall. So younger population is really being disproportionately represented in this phase of the pandemic. There are physical sequelae of the virus that we need to learn more about, including inflammation of the heart and inflammation of the kidneys and certainly much more to learn about the sequelae of the virus. So, we're, we're in a better place than we were in early August. The trends have been consistently positive. For anyone following the Chester County Health Department data closely, you'll note that a rate that may be reported one week may be different for that same week in the following report. And this results from further investigation of cases and reassignment of cases to other jurisdictions. So it's not really a problem with the data or a problem with the, the methods of the Health Department. It's just that as they go in and do their contact investigations, they may find that a few cases that were assigned to Haverford may actually belong in Philadelphia or, or Upper Darby. So it's not an error, just a clarification of the data. All of this background is to say that schools will be engaged in risk mitigation, not the elimination of risk. That risk mitigation is going to require strict adherence to screening by parents. Children with symptoms should not be in school. I expect that absenteeism is going to go up this year. If it doesn't, I think we're probably doing something wrong. Adherence to masking is essential, adherence to distancing, hand hygiene, environmental hygiene, and collaboration with the Chester County Health Department when it's necessary to do contact tracing. So, you know, I think an important point to note is that we're not measuring, or we're not going to be measuring the incidence of COVID in schools. We're going to be measuring the incidence of COVID in the communities. And, and that's the, the performance of our students and families in the community plays a really important role in, in mitigation and I can't emphasize that enough. So the conditions right now in the pandemic are as favorable as they have been at just about any time since early in the pandemic, or at least since late June and July. Mitigation efforts will have to continue as we bring people together indoors where the spread of the virus can be, can be more efficient in, in colder weather. But this is not a seasonal virus. It's been winter and spring in the southern hemisphere and it has proliferated there. And we certainly know that in spring and summer, it's been a problem here. So we can expect this to be with us from, for some time to come, but we are in a much better position than we have been, as I said, at, at any time since the beginning. So I think I'll stop there, Mr. Feinberg, and, and take your questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brennan. Questions from the board?
Anyone?
Antoinette?
I was using the raise hand feature. Um, thank you, Dr. Brennan, for, for joining us again. I really appreciate it. You know, I know the district has been really lucky to have you to join, you know, both in previous meetings and now. So, a couple of questions because I think that now we're at the point where we have the benefit of having other organizations, other schools, other, you know, daycares, things like that, having been open now for weeks, if not months. And so have you seen an increase in cases due to other schools being open in our area? You know, I think a lot of private schools have been open now for, at three weeks, I want to say. So would we be able to see if those were causing issues? And if we would be able to see that at this point, are, are they?
I'm not aware, I'm only aware of one school in the region, in the entire region, to my knowledge, that has gone from in-person learning to virtual learning. And that, as I understand it, is going to happen for about two weeks. I believe that was just instituted last week. So I'm not aware, I don't have, I don't have awareness of all the private and public schools by any means, but that's the only one that I'm, that I'm aware of. I think, I think what you're going to see are events where a student has a family member who has been identified as having COVID and, and you may have to take that child out of school. But I'm not aware of any contact situations or other, other shutdowns that have happened. I did learn today from the Chester County Health Department on the call that Dr. Roushi and I were on, that there was a, a small daycare center outbreak in, in Chester County. And that was discovered as a result of one of the children being tested because a family member was positive. And then there were, then there were other, other students in the daycare who were also positive. But I, I don't believe there's any information as to whether those were transmissions or other independent, independent cases.
What defines a small outbreak?
I would call a small outbreak anything more than two, two cases.
You read the articles pertaining to the Chester County Health Department's antibody testing and then shelving that program. How can we be assured that their statistics in Haverford Township and Delaware County are reliable?
Well, that's an entirely different test.
Okay.
That was antibody testing. And these tests are, that we're relying on are molecular tests that are detecting the presence of the virus. Those antibody tests are not detecting the presence of the virus, they're detecting the presence of an immune response. And that's a much, that's a much longer story. But I don't think you have any reason to doubt the veracity of the, of the test results that Chester County is, is reporting.
Mr. Fleischer, if you could use the raise hand feature, there's a few folks ahead of you. Okay, Antoinette, we're back to you.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I just had another question. So our hybrid plan is, is what we would move forward to, to go in person due to, you know, the distancing requirements. So our hybrid plan is, is two days of in-person learning for every student and then three days virtual. And so, you know, one student would be Monday, Wednesday, in school and then home, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, there'd be a different group in school, two different days. Do you have an opinion on the likelihood of spread with that plan versus, you know, some people in the community have come to us and said, why is, why aren't we in school every day with, you know, on half-days? And, and I'll just say, you know, regardless of the logistical difficulties that this sort of half-day model would, would have, you know, for, for busing and things like that. Do you have an opinion on which one would, would more, would be better to mitigate the spread?
So, in the half-day model, is everybody in class?
In the half-day model, it'd still be, I think, I think it would be instead of having a cohort Monday, Wednesday, the cohort would be mornings and then cohort B would be in afternoons. So instead of cohort A being Monday, Wednesday, cohort B being Tuesday, Thursday, I think there are maybe some other districts that are looking into this and we, we have gotten some community input about it.
Yeah. You know, I, I don't have an opinion about which one is better without knowing how much you depopulate the school in each plan. So, you know.
I think the school would be about half populated in, at any given time. Because it would be ha- half the school would be in quote cohort A and half school would be in cohort B. So they wouldn't be in there the same, so.
So they would, so either way, it would be half the school.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I think in that case, you know, your, your ability to mitigate the risk is, is equal. You know, the, the critical issue is that you're having fewer students in school. It gives you a greater opportunity to, to distance them as they're, as they're in class and, and transiting between classes. So, I don't really have an opinion as to, as to which one might be superior.
Okay. Um, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks. Laura?
Thank you again so much for speaking with us tonight. Just a few questions. I think the last time we spoke, I can't remember if it was with you or Dr. Rubin, but there was concerns about having enough testing. There had been testing shortages and things like that. Where are we with having the ability to do testing and get results quickly?
Testing is in a better place than it was in, in July and August. There's not as much demand around the country as there was then. I would say that the commercial labs are, are still not where we would like them to be at, at, in the July-August timeframe. The turnaround times were a week or more, sometimes two weeks. And now it's down to, now it's down to three or four days. That's not very useful when it comes to contact tracing because you have somebody, so you would have to, you know, if there was someone you were suspicious about and you had them tested, you would still have to quarantine them for, for that period while they're waiting for their, their test to come back. But it's, it's definitely in a better place than it was in terms of capacity.
That's good to know. And then a lot of colleges and universities for their reopening plans, they required mandatory testing before anyone was allowed to come to campus. Is that something that we should be considering or is that unnecessary? It's a little bit of a different model. So I'm just trying to think about, you know, what's.
It is, it is a different model. You know, the concern there is that the colleges have students in, in residential settings and, and they're interacting a lot and socializing. And, and here it's, it's a community setting. My short answer to the question is that if you could test everybody on a regular basis, that would be ideal. But a regular basis means more than weekly testing to me. A week is, a week is a long time to turn around to test and get exposed again. So it gives you, you know, two or three days of assurance that someone is not shedding virus at best. But then three or four days where they could be shedding virus and you don't know about it. So, you know, I think that, you know, try, if you're going to test, trying to test a couple of times a week probably makes the most sense. And I think that would be very difficult for the public school districts to, to pull off. It's, it would be inordinately expensive, first of all. It doesn't prevent infection. I want to emphasize that. It does not prevent infection. It helps you find out about infections. And then if you have a rapid turnaround time, you can do contact tracing quickly and prevent further spread. But it's really the behaviors in the community that are going to prevent infection. But the, you know, the average costs of tests are running between about 80 and, from the commercial labs, 80 to $120. So, you know, testing a school with 2,000 students twice a week, you know, the numbers get, get pretty large pretty fast.
Okay. And then I, last two questions are sort of related. With the hybrid plan, at the elementary level, the students would be eating during the day, so they'd have to take their masks off to eat and there would certainly be, you know, it would be a maskless time. So I was wondering for that sort of, what are the risks? And then similarly, one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight would be athletics. And so at some point, students might need to take their mask off to participate in athletic activities and if it were indoors, you know, where we know the risk is, is higher when you're indoors. So can you talk a little bit about that and, and the risks associated with that?
Sure. You know, for, for eating, having the mask off for as short a time as possible, I think is essential. Spacing as much as possible. So, you know, again, you're, you're trying to implement a layered set of activities. Obviously, the mask has to come off in, at lunchtime. But spacing the students out is, is helpful as well. Screening is very important. So that's, that's the first step. And, and making sure they're, they're using good hand hygiene. And for, you know, the few minutes that they're having lunch, they, they'll have to have the mask off and that will create some, some hazard, but hopefully not too much. Athletics, athletics is a, is a challenge. The, the only, the only athletic activity that I'm certain has resulted in transmission. And I'm, I probably don't know about all of them, but the only one that I'm certain has resulted in transmission is basketball. Very clearly, back in the spring, the NBA had transmissions between teams that were related to competition. I think all of the other activities that surround team sports are probably more hazard than, than most of the outdoor sports. So riding on buses, socializing, being in locker rooms, being in close proximity to each other. Those are, you know, those are, those are probably more hazardous than the actual competition. I'm not aware of any transmissions in football, although I, I can certainly imagine that they could happen. Just, you know, you don't have to be in contact with someone for 15 minutes to, to result in a transmission. The hitting, the close contact between linemen. You know, there's certainly evidence in other, of other infectious diseases being transmitted between people who hit each other, literally. So a defensive back and a wide receiver or a lineman and a quarterback, those, those transmissions occur that way. So I would expect some could happen that way. It's very clear that transmissions can occur in training, in, in weight training and working with trainers and those sorts of activities. That, I think, has happened at quite a few colleges around the country and with some professional sports teams. So, there are, I think, special hazards associated with athletics. I think that that would be an area where, you know, just given all the activities that I described, trying to test those teams makes sense to me.
Great, thank you.
Next up, Bridgette?
I was also gonna ask about the sports and any indicators that you've seen that kind of practicing or playing athletic games has been transmission and it sounds like you've covered that. Thank you.
Okay.
In earlier discussions we've had over the summer, there's been some more thought about how our youngest students, the kindergarten, first grade, elementary, and the virus transmission among high school students is different. Have any of your that data or, I think you, you talked about seeing youth, but you gave kind of birth to 19 as a range. At this point, are there any special concerns for age groups or in particular high school, I think was the one that we had heard concerns about before?
Yeah, most of those, that 1,000 case number that I mentioned is mostly in the 10 to 19-year-old age group and from, not from Delaware County data, but from other data, it's probably, there's probably a progression towards the older ages with an aggregation of more cases in, in older, older individuals and, and probably more symptomatic as well. It's, it's clear though that, that young children do get infected and shed the virus. It's still not clear, however, what role they play in transmission of the virus in the community. You know, did they get it from a parent or can they take it home and spread it to a parent? Or, you know, does it occur more in one, in one direction or another? That's not well-understood at this point still.
Okay, Bridgette? Next up, Kristin?
Sorry, I've got a baby right here. So my question, Dr. Brennan, is, is parents weigh having to report to work and whether or not they should keep their sick child home? And I'm thinking in terms of mild symptoms, like maybe their throat's a little scratchy or their nose is a little runny. Where should parents kind of draw the line in choosing to keep their child home or send them to school?
You know, it's a, it's a really important question and, and a really tough one. I, I think that until we, until we get further into the school year and have greater, you know, a greater sense of, of where we are and the projections are that things will continue to get better. The CDC projections, I should have mentioned, in Delaware County, over the next, over the next month, the projections are that it will get better. I, I think that we should be erring on the side of keeping, keeping kids home. You know, the symptoms are very nonspecific. We're getting into respiratory virus, respiratory virus season. And I know that that's a, that's a bitter pill to swallow. But that would be my bias at, you know, going into the school year, that kids ought to stay home if they have these nonspecific symptoms, until they can be cleared or the symptoms resolve quickly.
Thank you.
Ari?
Thank you, Larry. And once again, I apologize for jumping the gun earlier. When providing these opinions and guidance, Dr. Brennan, in accord, in concert with the Chester County Health Department, are any other health and wellness factors taken into account? Or is it strictly all about coronavirus?
You're asking about my opinions?
Correct, your opinions. And I'm sure you're working closely with the Chester County Health Department or at least making sure that there's some coordination in the opinions and guidance and advice that you're giving to school districts so that, you know, you're not on completely divergent paths. The reason I ask, I'll give you an example. I heard that child line reporting is down 50%. And that's a very scary statistic to think that there are children at risk because they're at home.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Edelberg quoted similar numbers to us on a superintendent's call earlier in the summer. She said that they, I think they got something like five calls a day or five calls a week and, and they had gone down to one. So I, I appreciate that and I appreciate the, the difficulties of having children who ought to be in school and getting, you know, in school and developing, having them at home. That's not my area of expertise. And so I would say that I'm, I'm weighing in on the virus. I'm certainly listening to the experts in child development and, you know, the other matters that you just raised. But that's not my area of expertise. And I think that, you know, my input to you is on the safety of the, of the school and the community. And, you know, I think that, you know, weighing that in concert with the other concerns is, is, is important, but I don't feel like I'm expert in those issues enough to, to weigh in on them.
Understood. My next question. Would there ever be, has there ever been historically a condition where the spacing mandate changes? So right now it's a six-foot mandating on, of space, which limits our ability to do more than the cohort hybrid model. And that's a state mandate, not a Dr. Brennan mandate. Is there, is there a chance in the history of epidemiology that, you know, that could change?
Well, I will say that I have advocated for that from the beginning. You'll recall that early on Bucks County was recommending closer spacing and I was not an advocate of that. So I agree with that. I think with all that we know about, and there's certainly more to learn, but the nature of this virus and its mode of spread, I don't see closer spacing, I don't see spacing changing until we have a good degree of herd immunity, either through an effective vaccine or more widespread infection or an effective treatment. So I, I don't see six feet of spacing changing anytime soon.
Thank you. Dave?
Hi, and thank you once again, Dr. Brennan. I seem to say that when we're off and every, the time you're here. Um, I said, I mean, I, one question, I guess, Kristen kind of alluded to it earlier. Um, is there any distinction between, or, I mean, there are a few, but is there any rock solid distinction between symptoms of the coronavirus and allergies? I know a few weeks ago I had, you know, a lot of students had allergies. A few weeks ago, I had a sore throat, was sneezing, wasn't sure if I should get tested, but no fever, anything like that. Is there any distinction that parents can make if their child looks, feels sick, but is, i- i- if their fever, for example, is not over 100, is it, is it safe to send them in more or less? Or can that be misleading, I guess? I think you muted.
It's, the symptoms are very nonspecific. The most characteristic symptoms of COVID are loss of taste and smell and, and a very specific type of rash. And other than that, it's really hard to distinguish. Now gastrointestinal symptoms and a sore throat are less common. You know, the most important symptoms are cough and, and shortness of breath and certainly fever when you have it, but as many as half the patients who are presenting with COVID infections don't have fever at presentation. And even if they do, they don't always have fever. It kind of comes and goes. So fever, shortness of breath, and cough are really, are really important triad. Loss of sense of taste and smell is, is most characteristic, is most characteristic of, of COVID. But certainly when you have a head cold, as I'm sure everybody on this call knows, you can lose your sense of taste and smell, but that, that ought to set off alarm bells.
Okay, appreciate that. And then also my other question was, was about sports. We, I think we all know that outdoor sports, you had, we have less transmit, less possibility of transmission than indoor sports, obviously. I'm just curious if there are any studies that, that have been done that can, that can give a kind of a, I'm just curious if there are any studies that, that have been done that can, that can give a kind of a comparison about versus then during, if you, to follow up to that, what additional steps could be taken for indoor sports to help to reduce the transmission for both players and if there's spectators, not now yet, but obviously in the, in the future.
I'm not aware of any published studies yet, you know, it's so recent that, you know, everything was shut down in March and nobody was playing anything until really Major League Baseball and, and soccer started to play over the summer. So apart from the, you know, case reports and anecdotes in the news about Major League Baseball, I'm not aware of any published studies that indicate the relative risk of outdoor sports versus indoor sports or exactly the kind of contact. But, you know, any activity that's going to create aerosols that you could inhale. So I could imagine, I could imagine that on a cross-country team that is running outdoors, but everybody is, you know, running at a pace and in a bunch, that you could have transmission even, even in those circumstances because you're breathing, you're breathing each other's air. In terms of what you can do with indoor sports, there I think that frequent testing is really, is really necessary. I'm, I'm working with one athletic program right now that's not, it's not, it's not high school or college. But what I've found is that it's really necessary to test at least twice a week and emphasize all the preventive measures, all the mitigating measures in order to assure that they're safe in their activities and they're safe when they're competing against others. And short of that, you know, I mean, basketball players are leaning on each other and breathing on each other. And, you know, wrestlers, there's no closer contact sport than, than that. So I can't think of any good mitigating approaches for those situations other, other than screening everybody regularly.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, Sal.
Dr. Brennan, thank you for being here. When, when we talk about being in a mitigation type mode here in terms of, you know, mitigating strategies for this, are we going to have to look down the path of potentially pivoting back to a virtual model? If the numbers say that that would be the better choice at that point? And then if we do, i- is that for the district as a whole? Or would we be potentially, you know, suggesting that specific schools would then move to a virtual model in order to mitigate the spread of the virus? Or is it based on community? Or what is the guidance there at that point?
It, it could be either. It could be either. I think if you're having, you know, significant outbreaks, if you have a significant outbreak in a school involving multiple classrooms with, you know, no epidemiologic link among the cases, then I think you could be looking at, at closing a school. On the other hand, if the community incidence rises and the, the test positivity rate is getting up above 7% towards 10% as it was back in the spring, then you could be looking at shutting down the whole district.
Okay, thank you. And, and I guess also what I'm asking is that despite the trend in the favorable circumstance right now, that we kind of have to stay on the alert and, and with some guidance, potentially pivot down the line.
We do, yeah, yeah. We have to, we have to, you know, continue with these mitigating approaches for the foreseeable future. Yeah.
Thank you.
Antoinette.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a couple more questions quickly. So, you know, like, like you started off, you said that the Northeast in the United States is doing better at mitigating the virus spread than, than some other parts. And so should we be, I, I believe that there's a recommendation from the, the governor, from the state, saying that certain, if you travel to certain states, you are recommended to quarantine. But I don't believe that it's a mandate to do that. And so should we also be encouraging folks if they take a trip to, you know, the latest hotspot, that they should, they should be quarantining and not be coming to school within 14 days?
The, yeah, there are, the last time I looked, the last time I, the, the list changes regularly. Over the space of about, the span of about two weeks, North Carolina was added to the list, having previously been dropped, it was added back to the list and then taken off again. So the list goes fast. There are at least 14 states on the list right now. There is no real mechanism to enforce that. But I, I think that, I think that, you know, to the extent that you know about such travel, you have to quarantine. I, I think that if you have that information in hand, you just can't sort out what people were doing or who they were with and what those people were doing when they were in North Carolina or Florida or Texas, which was some of the, some of the quarantine states. So it's tough to enforce, but, but I encourage it. And that's what we did at Penn. That we, we do have some undergrads on campus, even though we're all virtual. And they had to quarantine for 14 days when they came in.
Thanks. And then the last, the last thing I'll bring up is just that, like you said before, there are other viruses that have similar symptoms. And so I just want to talk about the flu vaccine again, which is available now. And just for the record, do you recommend that every single person in our township and especially in our schools get the flu vaccine?
Everybody over the age of two ought to get the flu vaccine.
Okay, thanks so much.
Okay.
Kristin.
Yeah, just one additional question. So I know some research was released a couple of weeks ago showing that a group of people who tested positive for COVID were twice as likely to have frequented restaurants in the previous two weeks before their testing or when they were found to be positive. So I'm thinking in terms of our cafeterias, especially our elementary students who'll be eating lunch in the cafeterias with their masks off. Considering that restaurants are places where people take their mask off to eat, similar to our cafeterias, should we be, I'm just wondering, are there additional precautions we should be taking? Is six feet enough? I know that research is also showing that, you know, COVID can be transmitted beyond six feet through aerosols. Yeah.
Yeah, so restaurants obviously are different than the cafeteria. And it's hard to, it's hard to know exactly, i- it's hard to know what to make of that, except that people were out and about. You know, were they waiting at a bar, at the bar at the restaurant to get a table? And, you know, were they cheek to jowl with other people as they were, as they're wait, waiting to be seated? I think, you know, for the, you know, for the sake of the cafeteria, having the students, you know, time and distance matter. So having them there for, having the mask down for as short a period of time as possible. And having them at least six feet apart is important. And I, I don't think there's more that you can do, except perhaps putting up plexiglass between each seat in the cafeteria or letting them eat outside or, or in the classroom and having, having sufficient space. But I think that, I think that, you know, my, you know, without, that, that study, you know, identified a risk factor. It didn't identify the specifics. And I think that a cafeteria is probably not the same level of risk as a restaurant.
Thank you.
Ari.
Thank you. Dr. Brennan, how intense is the virus in our area relative to, you know, earlier in the year when we saw a lot of hospitalization and we saw a lot of death? What's the hospitalization numbers like right now? How many people are on ventilators in Mainline Health and at Penn, so on and so forth? How serious is the state of the virus if you go to the hospital?
There are very few people in the hospital now across the entire region. I'm on a call with fellow chief medical officers every couple of weeks. And, you know, we have very few, very few people in our hospital system. So you have a five and six member hospital system and you might have 30 or 40 patients across the entire system who are hospitalized. There's no evidence that the virus is less virulent. There is evidence that it is, has moved to younger populations and that there aren't as many older people getting infected now. That may be for a couple of reasons. One may be the difference in behaviors between, you know, those who are 50 and older and those who are 30 and younger. I think that there's probably something to that. The, so, and, and that may be the, that may be the most, the most important issue. Younger people are out more and appear to be socializing and, and probably not using masks as often and, and are getting more infected more often. So the pandemic definitely has, has shifted age groups. There's no evidence that it's less virulent, however, we do know how to treat it better. We are not putting as many patients on ventilators. We're sort of, you know, toughing our way through those periods where patients are in most distress and using steroids to decrease the inflammatory response. And they seem not to need ventilators as often as they, as they did early on. The other issue is that there are very, very few cases coming out of nursing homes now. There are almost no cases coming out of nursing homes. You know, here and there, you'll have a small outbreak in a, in a nursing home and some patients will go to the hospital. But I, I don't see Delaware County nursing home data. I don't, I don't know that we have it broken out that way specifically, at least I've never seen it. But in Philadelphia, they do. And, you know, over the course of a week, there might be three or four or five cases coming out of nursing homes. I think that reflects two things. One, many patients got sick, left the nursing homes, many of them died. Two, I think there's a possibility that there's herd immunity in nursing homes because so many people were sick and so many staff were sick that everybody's had it. And, and it's just not, and, and I think nursing homes are doing a better job of keeping it under control now than they were early on when they were pretty, pretty bereft of resources. But I don't think it's a different virus. I don't think it's less virulent.
Other questions from the board? I just have a couple of comments before we let you go, Dr. Brennan. We have over 400 members of the public attending the meeting this evening. And you had mentioned loss of sense of smell earlier. And I just want to let folks know, anecdotally, what I've heard from people is that you can't smell the coffee and you can't smell the bacon. So that's, those are, those are pretty profound.
And sometimes that's the only thing that we, we've seen cases where it's only loss of sense of taste and smell.
Now, many of the school districts in the rest of the state had a week or two or possibly more head start on us. And I've, I follow all of the newspapers around the state on a daily basis. And, you know, I can say that, you know, I've probably seen 40 or 50 cases throughout the state. Lancaster County, York County, I think there are more districts with infections in York County than not. Lancaster is reporting two dozen cases spread across a bunch of districts. Most of the, most of the incidents around the state are onesies and twosies. It's maybe one or two students or a staff member. State college at this point is a mess. You know, they, they're, the, the rate in the town itself and at the college is so high that they've had to reconsider and stick with virtual learning in the state care, state college area school district. So, yeah. But, you know, good news is I'm not hearing of any fatalities and that's.
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm not aware of, those numbers that I quoted earlier, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any fatalities in Delaware County.
So, you know, I, I just want to say what a, what a valuable resource you've been for us. And, and thank you for your accessibility. I really, nothing personal, but I really look forward to the day when we don't see you anymore.
I'm not offended. I'm not offended.
Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking the time with us this evening.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're going to return to our agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the official board minutes from the September 3rd, 2020 regular public board meeting.
And so moves?
Larson second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anna, what do you have for us this evening?
We have 12 pub, public comments this evening, Mr. Feinberg.
All right.
Okay, a few of them actually date back a week or two after our last meeting. So the first one is from Michael Sweeney at 2406 Poplar Road, Haverford Township. Children from kindergarten through fifth grade are currently attending physical classrooms in Ambler, PA in the Wissahickin School District, and it is not hybrid. At Wissahickin School District's elementary schools, they are providing five day a week full instruction for all families who desire it. The Wissahickin School District is a smaller sized school district to ours and about 20 minutes drive from Haverford Township. Wissahickin is in Montgomery County, PA, which has had more cases of COVID than Delaware County has to date. They serve about 5,000 students in four elementary schools, one middle school and one high school. My understanding is Haverford Township roughly serves 6,000 students. What is a specific criteria you're using which explains why Haverford Township is not providing five day a week full instruction to the elementary schools in Haverford Township? What is different, be it trending new COVID cases, budget, elementary age, demand in Wissahickin School District? Thank you for your service and dedication to our township. Sincerely, Michael Sweeney. Our next comment is from Danielle Vitale. Hello, my name is Diane, is Danielle Vitale, and I have a, oh, I'm sorry, 22 Spring House Lane, Haverford Township, PA. Hello, my name is Danielle Vitale, and I have a son in eighth grade at HMS and a son in sixth grade at HMS and a son in first grade at Linwood. I love our town. I love our schools and I think all of our teachers have been doing an amazing job. That being said, virtual schooling is not sustainable. I am incredibly fortunate that I was able to postpone going back to work so that I can be home to help my children, in particular, my first grade son. I cannot imagine the difficulties working parents of children in younger grades are dealing with, but I can tell you that younger grade level students need constant support. I sit by my six, six-year-old every day and see pitfalls of virtual schooling firsthand. The little ones who do not shut off their mics, leading to excessive background noise, which makes a teacher almost intelligible. This happens multiple times a day. The little ones with no consistent adult support who have trouble understanding instructions given to complete independent work. This also happens multiple times a day when the teacher finishes a lesson and is trying to send the students off to complete assignments. I do not blame the six-year-olds for this. I do not blame their parents who need to work and/or supervisor their children. Telling a six-year-old without help to go log off, go to the Canvas homepage, go to the literacy page, go to Monday, click through the first lesson, do the second lesson, submit it and log back in 20 minutes is a lot. Please, please know that again, this has nothing to do with our wonderful teachers. My son's first grade teacher is doing an absolutely incredible job. She is enthusiastic, fun and patient, and we are so fortunate that she, she is our son's teacher. My first grader used to love school. Now it's a struggle. He was starting to make friends last year and now he sits alone every day with me at our kitchen table. It broke my heart when he cried, saying he wants to go to real school and have friends to play with him. I should also mention that eye strain, we both suffer from after staring at screens all day. My middle schoolers also suffer from eye strain and headaches. Should I mention the tech problems we have as well? The 25 minutes spent yesterday on Zoom issues rather than reading a lesson. Again, no one's fault, just tech problems. In middle school, I kicked off Zoom. In the middle school and elementary students miss lessons when they are left in waiting rooms because the class has started and the teachers can't see who's in the waiting room once they start sharing their screens. The situation is simply not sustainable. We are not meeting our children's academic, social and emotional needs. It's just not other, it is, it's not just children in other states back at school. It's not just students in other parts of our state back at school. It's now children in our community back at school, our neighbors. Local private schools are open. Those children are getting a real education. Our children are falling behind academically. Our children's social, emotional needs are not being met. Our children are going to fall behind. The divide between those in school and those who aren't and the divide between young children who have support and those who don't will only increase. I am begging the board to resume some type of in-person learning and to continue to provide online learning for those families that need it. This virus is not going away and just telling schools and just getting school days in is not enough. We need to meet our children's academic, social and emotional needs or else we are all failing them. Many thanks. The next one is a petition and it's signed by 13 community members. Would you like me to read their names? Would you like me to read their names and addresses?
Yeah, yes, please.
Okay, Matt, okay, the topic is a request to withdraw residential property tax assessment appeals. Matt Welsh at one hundred Washington Avenue, Beth Welsh, one hundred Washington Avenue, Haverford Town, PA. Kelly Rambo, six East Hillcrest Avenue, Haverford Town. Jeffrey Walsh, one twenty-four Campbell Avenue, Haverford Town. Mark Jagana, twenty-nine Woodcroft Road, Haverford Town, PA. Thomasine Gory, twenty-nine Woodcroft, Haverford Town, PA. Michael Benchash, Ben's Ash, one forty-one Rodney Circle, Bryn Mar. Stefan Frank, twenty-five oh nine Brynmore Avenue, Ardmore, PA. Karen Cohen, three oh eight Highland Avenue, Bryn Mar, PA. Megan Gould, three thousand Robin Lane, Haverford Town, PA. It's a signature, I think it's Kevin Dillon, sixty-two Woodcroft Road, Haverford Town, PA. Marian Butaya, seventeen Woodcroft Road, Haverford Town, PA, and Gavin Kelly, seventeen Woodcroft Road, Haverford Town, PA. Dear school board members and township commissioners, the undersigned or Haverford Township homeowners who property assessments recently appealed by the school district and township SDNT noted as, based on information provided by the SDNT, research of public records and consultations with attorneys and appraisers, we believe the appeals violate the law for several reasons. The appeals rely on Delaware County's new property tax assessments performed by Tyler Technologies. Those assessments are fundamentally flawed. For example, our analysis comparing six hundred and forty-eight Haverford Township home sales in two thousand and nineteen to the county's new property tax assessments, which could reflect one hundred percent of two hundred and nineteen fair market value, reveals a difference of more than thirty million or an average deviation of over forty-six thousand per residential property for the six hundred and forty-eight properties evaluated. This is especially troubling because two thousand and nineteen sales data, the best indicators of far, fair market value were available to yet apparently ignored by Tyler Technologies. By arbitrarily choosing to appeal the county's new property tax assessments of just twenty-five new homeowners whose recent purchases prices exceeded Tyler's flawed valuations by more than two hundred thousand dollars each, the SDNT are not meeting the standards of fairness and uniformity required by law. The same analysis cited above shows one hundred properties each with a purchase price exceeding its new assessment by one hundred thousand or more, two hundred and fifty-seven properties by fifty thousand or more, and four hundred and four properties by twenty thousand or more. These results are from a sample of just six hundred and forty-eight properties. If the SDNT had used truly uniform and objective criteria to select assessment appeals, then they would be appealed, then they would have appealed any property that had a failed market value in excess of, say, ten percent of its assessed value. Consequently, if such a uniform and objective standard had been applied to the six hundred and forty-eight home sales in two thousand and nineteen, more than half of those new homeowners would have received appeals because three hundred and forty-two of the six hundred and forty-eight sale prices exceed the new appraised values by ten percent or more. And if such a uniform and objective standard had been applied to all township properties, then the number of appeals likely would have reached into the thousands because similar discrepancies have been found that are less comprehensive but no less persuasive, persuasive comparison of the county's new assessments, assessments to home sales completed from two thousand and sixteen to eighteen. The consequences of Tyler ignoring available sales data as indicators of far, fair market value is perfectly illustrated in the SDNT, SD and T's appeals of three properties on Woodcroft Road. These consequences are made obvious when the properties are evaluated on a, on a value-per-square-foot basis, which controls for differences in house sizes. Woodcroft Road is one block street with thirty houses that are similar in age and condition. Tyler assessed the Woodcroft homes at an average of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per square foot despite the readily, despite readily available evidence of much higher home values from a stark Woodcroft sales. Two hundred and forty-nine dollars per square foot, two thousand and six, two hundred and twenty-five per square foot, two thousand and fifteen, two hundred and twenty-one per square foot, two thousand and sixteen, two hundred and eighty-nine per square foot, two thousand and eighteen, and two hundred and forty-six per square foot, and two hundred and sixty-four per square foot, two thousand and nineteen. Because Tyler ignored available sales data and arrived at inexplicably low assessed values, the three Woodcroft Road homeowners who are being threatened with the SDNT appeals are facing huge possible tax increases relative to every other homeowner in the street of fifty-seven percent, fifty-nine percent, and forty-nine percent. Such an outcome would greatly, would grossly unfair and, in our opinion, illegal. If the county's reassessment process isn't properly conducted, such appeals or brand-new assessments required to be one hundred percent of a two thousand and nineteen fair market value would not be contemplated because properties would be fairly inequitably assessed. To the undersigned, therefore, the only fair and equitable solution is twofold. First, the SDNT should withdraw their appeals. Second, the SDNT, either on their own or together with neighboring townships such as Radnor and Marple, should immediately petition the county through the court if necessary to halt the implementation of new tax assessments until they can be thoroughly reviewed and adjusted to properly reflect fair market value as required by law and specifically ordered by Delaware County Common Pleas Judge, Judge Burr, who ruled the former assessment procedure was in violation of Pennsylvania Constitution, which says all taxes should be uniform upon the same class of subjects within the territorial limits of the authority levying the tax. Only after assessments are fairly adjusted to reflect true market value can new SDNT military rates be calculated. To ignore the material and widespread errors of Tyler's valuations would be unjust to all and to seek a handful of arbitrary individual property assessment appeals based on those flawed valuations would be contrary to your responsibility to represent and protect the interests of your constituents. There is a lot at stake. For SDNT, the risks are legal and reputational but not financial because the property tax reassessment process must be revenue-neutral by law. While other townships and school districts are on record supporting their residents by questioning the county's reassessments, the SDNT have chosen to single out new home buyers for welcome-home property assessment appeals. Ironically, most of us are longtime township residents who chose to stay in the township. We have deep roots in the community and our, our friends, neighbors, and relatives are appalled by the circumstances of the SDT and appeals. For each of us, the risks are dramatic property tax increase that would cost several thousands of dollars each year. Every year, we are therefore prepared to fight, and we hope the school district and township will drop their appeals and join us in the real battle to ensure that the standards for the county's reassessment required by the court and state constitution are met, and all Haverford Township property owners across neighborhoods and classes are taxed fairly and equitably. Sincerely. Our next one is from Krista and Scott Kerber at eight eleven Powder Mill Lane. Although our eighteen-year-old graduated from, from HHS in June, and we've decided to homeschool our seventh grader this year, we're consistently proud of our school district's effort to offer the best possible education and meet the diverse social and emotional needs of every student. The district's commitment to our kids is one of the best things about living in Haverford Township, and because we especially want to thank you right now for recently incorporating the BLM Brain Pop video into the curriculum, about which we have heard rave reviews from our friends, neighbors, and we are happy to share with our son. We are extremely grateful for all the district's efforts to create an inclusive culture that challenges and equips students to realize a better world than the one they've inherited. Despite the impossibility of pleasing everyone, we sincerely hope you'll stay the course. Our next is from Summer Paylone at one, at thirteen thirty-six Robinson Avenue. I'd like to make an appeal to the district to implement recordings of live recordings during virtual learning. I believe this should be available to all students and not just for students with accommodations, five oh four IEPs. Even five, five oh four IEP students would need to additionally request it to be added to their plan to access this service. This is beneficial for families with working parents, multiple learners, technology failures, schedule interruptions, virtual breaks, et cetera. Typically, what is a benefit for students with accommodations would also be a benefit for traditional learners and should be considered. This is a standard practice in other school districts, charter schools, and cyber schools, and therefore is a reasonable request for a high-caliber school district like Haverford School District to implement as well. I encourage you to add this capability to our virtual learners as quickly as possible to keep all of our students on pace. Sincerely yours. Catherine Wang at sixteen Tenby Road. I am in favor of reopening schools in some fashion for all students who want to return to in-person learning, starting with the youngest students. While I am disappointed that there have not been more options presented in terms of expanding teaching spaces, utilizing outdoor space with heating as necessary, or other creative options to send students back full-time or closer to full-time, I see any hybrid plan as a step in the right direction. I continue to believe the current situation is affecting the learning and mental health of the youngest students the most, so I feel those students should be prioritized. However, I think all students can be back to school safely. I am aware of many public and private schools in the region, not limited to southeastern Pennsylvania, but the tri-state area and other states with comparable numbers, going back to school in some fashion and not experiencing, experiencing major spikes in COVID cases. The same is true for youth sports, daycares, and other child cares, et cetera. While we have seen news reports of schools reopening and needing to close due to COVID spikes, those appear to be isolated incidents, incidents of schools in areas of significantly higher infection rates where masks were optional. I am confident that with sufficient planning and precautions, the risk of infection can be significantly mitigated to make the schools a safe place for students who want to return. Moreover, we as a community and society still do not have any real way to anticipate an end to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Therefore, I strongly feel any decision cannot be based on the timing of a vaccine because such timing would be entirely speculative. In addition, in deciding whether to reopen schools in some capacity, I hope that the considerations are not limited to the risk of COVID exposure, but also include students' mental health, home situations for both children and parents, the quality of learning in person versus online, and other considerations that may have been overlooked or minimized by many who advocate in favor of remaining fully virtual for an independent period of time. While I understand that the risk of COVID infection unfortunately will be present at schools, as it is present in some extent in all aspects of the community, that risk is will not realistically drop to zero. Our children, however, have been able to attend school in the past in spite of limited risks of illness, injury, accidents, and other potential harms. Thank you. Chad Urban, two oh five East Manoa Road, Haverford Town. School board members and Dr. Roushi, I appreciate your efforts to utilize data from the Chester County Health Department to make the decision on when students will return to school. Having these parameters in place will surely help in the decision-making process, and I assume you'll be, you will utilize this methodology. Based on the methodology and data provided by the Chester County Health Department, we currently sit at a high level of community transmission. I would urge you to take the conservative course and continue with online learning. We know that with winter coming, the number of cases will rise, and you will most likely have to go back to online learning again later this year. This is an opportunity to maintain continuity by staying with our current structure. Also, if you drive around town, it is fairly obvious that a large portion of our community is disregarding social distancing. If you bring students back, you will likely have asymptomatic students interacting with the general student population. Other concerns exist around how the students will be educated going forward. We would all agree that full-time in-person learning in a normal environment is better than a virtual model. Of course, that is not an option. Even in the smaller classes and the virtual model, the teacher should not be moving around the classroom and physically interacting with students. The students themselves should not be breaking into smaller groups for closer interaction. I do find it difficult to believe that the hybrid model with students being taught two and a half days per week in person and one and a half day online is better than a full-time virtual model where they are all in class every day. I find it hard to understand why the hybrid model is a better educational experience for the students and would appreciate an explanation. Thank you. This is, my name is Carol Osipowicz. I live at one thirty Strathmore Road, Haverford Town, PA. There is a risk to going back to school. There's a lot of uncertainty and fear about that risk, but there's a lot that we do know. We know that, one, despite the best efforts of our teachers, remote learning, learning is ineffective. With undue time and effort wasted on tech support, very little time is devoted to didactics. This is most evident in young students who are not developmentally equipped to navigate digital learning tools and cannot control their behavior in a remote environment. Moreover, these difficulties are exacerbated by parental resources and availability, directly contradicting the principles of equality. Two, the pandemic has already disrupted the educational trajectory of a generation of students. It is well-established that any prolonged absence from formal education is detrimental to the long-term educational, economic, and health outcomes of students. Continued absence from physical schooling will have numerous devastating ill effects on our children's lives now and in the future. Three, with appropriate sanitation and physical controls, experts agree that it is possible for children to return to school. Marie Curry famously said, "Nothing in life is to be feared. It is only to be understood." Now is the time to understand more so that we may fear less. There is a risk with returning to school, but the risk is not return, of, of not returning is even greater. Please do not let the fear of a few privileged but loud voices dictate the decisions that are necessary so that our children can get the education they deserve. Listen to the recommendations of experts who understand the situation. Together as a community, we must be brave, not perfect, and value education above other pursuits. Please commit to allowing our students to return to school. Sincerely. James Allman from eighteen hundred Arlington Road, Haverford Town, PA. Good afternoon. I am running again as a concerned resident and parent of a fifth-grade student at Chester Wald Elementary. As thrilled as I am to see that there appears to be a path to reopening our schools, I am somewhat confused about this decision based on the fact that on eight six twenty, Dr. Brennan of the University of Pennsylvania Health System and Board Certified Infectious Disease and Internal Medicine, that our schools remain closed for in-person instruction until October. He cited various scientific and was supported by numbers based on his expert opinion and research. I agree completely with the board in listening to and following his advice. More concerns about Dr. Brennan's response as it relates to the question of reopening and what the metrics need to, to be to do so safely. He stated that the meeting that he had recently discussed thresholds for reopening or re-closing with the CDC staff are working on community guidance, and that there are no firm thresholds for reopening or re-closing should we reopen and start to have cases again. He further added that the numbers can box you in, and that is his view, is that the numbers are somewhat arbitrary. What is different about the numbers today that inspires confidence in reopening if, in fact, the numbers can box you in and models are somewhat arbitrary? In August, Dr. Brennan appeared to be moving the goalposts as it relates to reopening. Lastly, I appreciate the efforts and leadership of the entire school board during these difficult times. Thank you. This is from Deborah Morris at forty-five East Turnbull Avenue in Haverford Town. I have a question for the board meeting tonight that I would like to know before we go back. In an elementary setting of five hundred students with all of us sharing common space, how many positive cases will cause a closure? Our next comment is from Monae Riley. Glendale Road, Haverford Town, PA. Good evening, board members. Last week, the showing of the Black Lives Matter video to our fifth graders made me extremely proud to be part of the Haverford community. As a member of the BIPOC BIPOC community, it means a lot to see the district's basis and strategic planning goals come to life. I know it was only shown in two of the five elementary schools. While we have to start somewhere, I do hope all of our scholars get the chance to benefit from this more inclusive curriculum, regardless of what elementary bounds they're in, especially our fifth graders who will be in the combined middle school next year. We should be proud of our district as we set the example other districts can and should follow. Let us not forget the protests around the end to school segregation and Little Ruby Bridges. The right thing is not always easy. There will be those who want to protect status quo at the peril of others, but I hope that Haverford continues to strive to be on the right side of history and continues to let their BIPOC communities know that they matter. Thank you. Our last comment is from Michelle Collier at Garfield Avenue, Haverford Town, PA. Dear SDH, SDHT board members, I am writing about the Brain Pop video that was shown to the fifth graders at Linwood and Manoa Elementary Schools on Friday, September eighteenth. As a black person living in Haverford Township, I want to commend the school board and the district at large for your commitment to anti-racism education through the Basis Program and your anti-racism resolution issued in August. My son is in fourth grade, so his class did not, did not watch the video. However, I watched the video once. I became aware of it. The Brain Pop producers did a wonderful job of presenting the information in a factual and age-appropriate manner without promoting a narrative that all white people or all police officers are bad. Change indeed, is indeed challenging and frightening for those trying to resist change as well as those trying to affect change. I implore you to continue to expose students to this critical information and not be deferred by a few loud voices that are seeking to maintain the status quo and deny the lived experience of others unlike themselves. Sincerely. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg.
Thank you, Anna. Appreciate it. Like to thank all the folks who submitted items for public comment. We, we certainly appreciate the diverse opinions that we get, and I'd also like to thank those folks who have emailed us over the last six months for their ongoing suggestions and concerns. Those help to inform the decisions that the board and the administration makes during these times. Next item on our agenda is student reports. We'll hear from our high school student, Erica Borby. Erica?
Good evening, staff, community, and members of the board. I'm Erica Borby, and I am so excited to be reporting tonight. Today marks the beginning of the fourth year of school and strength to embrace this new way of learning. Today marks the beginning of the fourth week of school and students have embraced this new way of learning. We are lucky enough to enjoy a few consecutive three-day weekends. We're now energized and enthusiastic for our first full week of school. Clubs and activities are commencing in a virtual form with club leaders and administrators meeting regularly to determine the most efficient way to host our extracurricular affairs. Club leaders have been tasked with creating video snippets detailing club information due at the end of the week in preparation for a virtual activity fair. Minding your mind solicited virtual assemblies on Tuesday and Wednesday that were a huge success. Students were able to ask questions to our guest speaker who had excellent tips for dealing with depression and anxiety, noticing warning signs, and most importantly, reaching out and asking for help. Senior portrait retakes are on Wednesday, September 30th, and any senior who missed out on their original picture date or would like to retake their pictures are welcome to schedule an appointment. Counselors are available for appointments through Canvas to help students who have any questions or concerns. There was a virtual back-to-school night for parents last Monday, September 14th, and I for one found it very amusing watching my mom try to navigate Zoom. I helped eventually, of course. Senior comment-up completion sessions occurred today from 10:45 till 11:20, and each senior got the chance to navigate the college process with their respective counselors. Over 100 colleges are visiting Haverford High School virtually throughout this month and October, and students are welcome to register and attend through Navions. I would once again like to thank our teachers for their immense support, patience, and understanding these past few weeks. Nothing is more heartwarming and reassuring than longing on to Zoom each day and being encouraged by all the positive energy each teacher brings to their virtual classroom. Their love and kindness will most likely leave a lasting impression on my peers and I that will last a lifetime. Thank you to the board for this opportunity, and I look forward to presenting at my next meeting.
Thanks, Erica. It's great to see you. Thanks for your report. Next item on our agenda is the Athletics Health and Safety Plan. Mr. Donaghy.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. It's always tough to follow Erica. She does such a wonderful job, and all the students have been doing a great job. So I just wanted to put in a little plug for them before I get started. With me tonight is Ms. Robtison. Vanessa Robtison is our new athletic director, thrown right into the COVID world. She's been doing a wonderful job. She's going to present tonight our Health and Safety Plan for athletics. She has been working closely with both local and state athletic directors. Athletic directors as far as State College, the Central League, Chesmont, all over the state. She's also been in contact with the PIAA District One office. And over the weekend, she received 60 emails just about athletics alone. So she almost broke the weekend record for emails during the COVID crisis. So she's been doing a wonderful job acclimating not only to Haverford but getting our athletes ready. And she'll talk to you a little bit about our athletes that are already here too. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Robtison, and then, of course, we'll answer any questions either during or after the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Donaghy. At this time, I would like to say, wow, following Erica is really a tall task. Well done, and it's always awesome to see our students do so well. I look forward to meeting you at some point in person, hopefully this school year, Erica. To dive right into athletics, the Central League last week, based on the news that came out from the Chester County Health Department where they revised their public and private school guidance for athletics and removed their statement with the recommendation to wait till January 1, met last, Central League met last week, and with that recommendation having changed, determined that knowing there was no guarantee that the PIAA was going to approve a PIAA model, decided to go ahead and create a fall model and schedule for our fall athletes to ensure that we can avoid weather issues as best as possible, make sure that we are keeping in mind our field availability issues at the variety of schools within our league. And also, we really didn't want to cut into any of the other seasons and take away winter or spring opportunities, especially, we want all of our kids to have opportunities. But, you know, knowing that the spring students really didn't have an opportunity last year, we also didn't feel that that was fair to cut into their season this year. So this plan really allowed for the Central League to take a plan in and under our control. So the Central League A.D.s and administration worked collaboratively last week to create a systematic and phased approach for a staggered return to competitive fall sports. This would be with preseason sports starting as early as September 29th, so Tuesday next week, assuming we get approved tonight. The central, this would be a Central League-only schedule. And the purpose of the Central League-only schedule is to keep the competitions in a geographic confine of the Central Athletic League with the goal to help protect our health and safety of our students, coaches, and our communities. The Central League will construct a culminating event for all of the fall athletics as well to continue enriching the experience for all of our student athletes for fall. This allows for winter and spring seasons to not be impacted by our start time and for them to be able to have their full seasons. I think it's really important for us to note as well that we had very successful voluntary workouts. Parents and athletes communicated with us and acted accordingly to our original Health and Safety Plan. Parents and athletes were extremely cooperative and very communicative. I think we should note that anywhere we had a positive case and students' parents provided the documentation, none of those students tested positive as a result of perhaps one of our athletes having attended that could have been positive at the time of practice. So that's where we're at with Central League, and we'll dive right into the plan here. So with our plan, I think it's important to note that there are some things that are really consistent through the plan. So coaches and athletes will participate in pre-screening on a daily basis for documentation purposes and safety protocols. Students will come prepared for practice. There will be no locker rooms. There will be no weight rooms. They will bring their own hydration and water. Parents will be responsible and/or the student getting themselves to practices. And then students, we would transport for competitions. We really want to emphasize that students need to wash their hands well prior to arriving to practice. At the conclusion of practice, when they go home, they will need to shower and wash any of their PPE stuff. And we need parent support to make sure that we are consistent in doing that. Our plans would allow for social distancing. So upon arrival, students should socially distance. During water breaks, students should socially distance. We have essentially two phases. So it would be voluntary non-contact where students would be potted in groups. And then coaches would present practices in such a way that they are not having direct contact with one another. And then as we progress into Phase Two, they would move to full contact and also have the opportunity to compete in-season. We additionally in our plan have a protocol to ensure that any athlete that arrives with any symptoms on campus or falls ill during, what their action steps would be. In addition to making sure that anyone tests positive, communicates that with administration or athletic trainers, and that person would be on a 14-day quarantine and need to come back to school, would not be allowed to come back without medical documentation. I think the big thing that people are looking for tonight is the calendar for athletics. So September 29th would begin the fall season mandatory preseason. With that, we would move into October 1 would be essentially the first date for winter voluntary. And then October 15th, moving to winter contact, November 2nd, spring voluntary, and then November 16th, spring contact. Additionally, with the calendar that is from the Central League, we would be able to start golf competitions on October 2nd. The earliest date per PIAA rules for contests of other, for scrimmages for other sports would be October 3rd. And that would be girls tennis, field hockey, girls and boys soccer, volleyball, and cross-country. We would have our first competition for girls tennis on October 6th. October 10th would be the first possible scrimmage date for football. As I'm talking, I hope you hear the phased-in progression of sports here from non-contact to full contact. So starting with golf into some of our team sports, finishing with football. And then our first competition date would be October 17th for field hockey, girls and boys soccer, volleyball, cross-country. And our first competition date for football would be October 23rd. This plan would allow for flexibility. So if we were to play another school that has to pull out due to COVID cases, and there's another similar scenario in the league, we can swap opponents. We might be in a scenario where we need to play a school more frequently if another school's having issues. But ultimately, it allows for flexibility, but as many playing experiences as possible and safely for our fall athletes to get as much of their fall season as they can.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have questions for us?
First up is Bridget.
Hi, I've got to say, first of all, I'm really excited. I have two high school students who are looking forward to playing soccer. One's a senior and a captain on the team and something that we're really looking forward to in our household. I'm looking forward to being at the games, but I do understandably have just some concerns or questions about how this is all going to work. One of the questions is, thank you for outlining all the safety protocols. And I saw the preseason, at least from the girls soccer team, and how that successfully worked and put in the safety protocols. In addition to the coaches' responsibility, is there any oversight of the various teams and kind of how they're monitored to ensure that there is compliance with the plan?
Yeah, so I would provide direct oversight of the coaches within my responsibilities. In addition to the whole, Haverford High School administration will ensure that we are meeting the expectations, just like we're doing now with our voluntary out-of-season plan that was approved earlier in the year.
Yeah, it's just to reiterate, it's not just all on Ms. Robtison. So that we need to have oversight of the plan with all the teams. So the administrators already know that they're going to be assigned to different teams, and they have to, everybody's doing a great job, but just to keep everybody safe and to keep an eye on everyone, you know, it's a little, it's a different world now. We're going to have to step up and do more in the area of athletics and activities to make sure everyone's safe.
Thank you. And in terms of kind of reporting, I have two questions. One, if a participant or a parent has concerns, is there a recommended outlet or a channel for them to raise?
Sure, depending on what it is, it might be something they want to address directly with the coach. If that's not the avenue that they feel comfortable or they feel is the appropriate level. The first page of the plan, I believe, is the first page, first paragraph, does have me as the primary contact for parents, athletes, and the community that would have any questions. And my contact information is on that sheet for them. You know, as you know, there will be things that will be new for everyone, and we'll have to go case by case. And then there will be simple things that we already know the answers to and we can address immediately.
Thank you. I just thought it would be helpful for the community to hear that.
Yeah, and then any COVID questions, we contact the Chester County Health Department immediately. We have a great liaison there. He's been very receptive to our calls. It's not a 24-hour hotline, so I wanted the parents out there to be aware of that. But during the day, they're available Monday through Friday. And I've had to make a bunch of calls already, even though we're not even, you know, in live, nothing to do with athletics. But different scenarios come up where someone's contracted COVID or might have symptoms. So we have to call the Chester County Health Department to figure out what's the best way to keep everybody safe. And a little public service announcement, the first thing they ask is, is everyone wearing masks? You know, was, did the team have their masks on? Did the groupings have their mask on? So I can't stress that enough. The very first question they've asked every single time I've called is, did they have their mask on?
Just to piggyback off that, every time we've had a call, we are in direct communication with our coaches as well. And they've been able to provide their practice plans, specifically who's in which pod, their attendance for that day. I mean, I can't reiterate enough how wonderful our fall coaches have been through all the additional documentation that they have to do beyond what they would normally be doing.
Yeah, thank you. And I think, you know, this is one of the ways that we get to have nice things like sports, right? To have that compliance and to do those extra things. I know one of my daughters has been playing club soccer, and we've had a chance to go to some tournaments and games, and I will happily wear a mask on the sideline and stand 12 feet away from anybody just to have the opportunity to watch them play, which then does lead me to a couple of questions that are more specific to in-season activities. One question is about roster numbers. You know, I understand that, you know, the, it's important to kind of be able to maintain numbers and safe groupings and things like that. Will athletes and parents need to expect a kind of a different approach to how many players get to participate in a team? Are there going to be restrictions because of COVID concerns that maybe we hadn't had in prior seasons without COVID?
So coaches will have to, as always, pending how many people try out, there's a very strong likelihood, depending on the sport and circumstances, may cut the cuts on their team. We are not at a place yet to determine whether or not we will have freshman sports or JVB sports. If we don't have those as an additional opportunity for our students, then we would ask for our coaches to carry a little bit larger numbers than what they would normally do. However, as you know, every sport has a number of which students can participate on a team at any given time during the contest. And, you know, playing time is always a hot topic in athletics. As long as athletics exists, that will be a topic. So we also don't want to carry numbers that provide false sense of hope for students who come and work and don't get the reward of playing in a game. So we have to be somewhere in the middle and making sure that we provide the positive and meaningful experiences. We might need to carry a little bit higher numbers than we have in the past, but we also have to be really considerate of, I think, students' feelings and parents' time and make sure that whatever we do carry, we're able to provide students with opportunities.
Yeah, and then to piggyback on that, it's going to look very different on the sidelines. If you watched any NBA games, you see how they sit almost in a theater-style setting. We've already started those discussions on, you know, spacing people out on sidelines and indoors and all those things have already started. So that's, it's going to look a lot different to keep everybody safe.
Yes, I can say, you know, Larry and I have been on lots of calls with board directors around the state, and that spectator issue is one that's got a lot of attention in lots of places. So, yeah, I think that's something that the community needs to understand that in order to let the kids play, they might have less access to watching the games or need to do it in a different way than in the past. Another thing about the access to practices and games, one is in the hybrid model. Not every student will be at school every day. In what ways is that being? Um, in what ways is that being can um consideration being made for that? Um, and how kids might be able to get to campus if they'd been at home that day and and in terms of timing and just any logistical challenges with that?
Uh, we haven't run into any yet. They've been getting here for voluntary workouts, uh which has been great. But if we do have a situation where a student uh is unable to get a ride, we'll work with our transportation department uh to to make sure they get here. So we don't want to cut off anybody's access uh to to these opportunities. So we haven't run into that in the fall, but we do expect at some point i- it might change. And especially when people, when we go back to the hybrid, people's situations are going to change too. So um we are ready uh for that and the coaches are working. Lot of times behind the scenes to see who needs rides and because we're very cautious about carpooling and things like that.
I guess one final thing on the carpooling is, um, I saw in the plan that um I know there's been discussion about riding buses and how that's a maybe a a concern for people in coming to and from school. Um, riding buses is typical for teams, you know, to travel all together to a game. Um, but I understand that's still the team requirement. We won't have parents or students driving separately to those away events, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll let someone else ask some questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up is Laura.
Thank you. Um, I just had a few questions. Um, one of them was based on what Dr. Brennan just said, which was about um mandatory testing for, or sorry, not mandatory, frequent testing for student athletes. Um, and I don't remember seeing anything about that in the plan. Um, is that something based on his advice and what he just said? Is that something that you might consider adding? Um, I'm thinking specifically for the um the time when uh it's it's full contact. Um, when students are maskless and it's full contact.
This conversation has come up within the Central League and uh we're, one of the schools has contacted this um Chester County Health Department to see how we could reasonably do do something of that nature and we to my knowledge, despite all the emails this weekend, I don't recall seeing an update on that. Um, at this time, it would be unrealistic for for us to provide that for for our athletes. Is it something that we would consider if it's possible? Yes.
Yeah, and some of the concern with that is the turnaround time for the testing, but we know uh some of the testing has gotten a lot better. So we're still, that's still in the discussion phase. That what, we weren't able to put anything in writing about that.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, and then another question I had um was about sort of signage and markings. Um, is that something that we're adding? Just as a reminder, it might already be in place, I'm not sure. Um, but you know, I'm thinking like when they're taking their water breaks, are there markings so they kind of know where to go and what's a safe distance?
I can, I can just talk about what I've seen so far. Uh, the the students have been wonderful. They have been amazing. I'll give you a quick example. The uh, some of the cross-country team, they have their own beach towel. So they they lay it out when they're stretching and it's kind of like their own space. And then they spread the towels out like kind of like they're on the beach where you're not right on top of the next person. So they, so that's like a visual example. We don't have signs in the middle of the field. Uh, football, they are literally six yards apart and there it's it's just a a giant grid that they have.
Coaches are placing cones down, so students all know that they have to report to a specific location. And that's their location for the whole practice. So anytime uh even if they're going to do like a large group instruction, the kids are standing in in those co- uh cone spaces so that we know that they are not, um, you you know, we all do it as we start talking, we we gravitate towards one another. They're all kind of married to a cone.
And and it has been uh interesting to see that the transformation of the way coaches approach things. So at the end of practice, uh, speech or everybody's six feet apart. And after the first or second time, the students, the students know that and they 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 do it. And then tennis comes up and they stand at the fence. And the first time I saw it, I didn't know what they were doing and they were all si- exactly six feet apart. And they wait there until the the cohort comes off the court. So uh, it's part of the training and it's worked uh significantly better than I ever thought it would.
I I have to, I have to add, I I I'm new to Haverford, but I couldn't be more proud of how our coaches and athletes have been handling this. I I mean, it's like our nor- it has become our norm to to be to be distanced like that. And the kids are really doing it under the coach's direction.
Um, and then I just had one other small suggestion. Um, in the the language in the document that you're submitting, I think the language is something like, uh, you know, if a, if a family member or someone in the household um has tested positive, then the student would then need to, you know, isolate or something like that. Um, do you also want to add or or another close contact? Um, so it could be, you know, a significant other or something like that, someone else that they may have been in close contact that's not a family member, not someone in their household. Do we want to broaden it a little bit or is there a reason?
We're going to really box ourselves if we do that.
Okay.
Um, and we do like, like um Mr. Donaghy said, we report every case we know of to uh the Chester County Health Department and they do all of um the contact tracing. Um, so a- and and honestly, the kid, the kids and parents have been really good about communicating that to us. And I just don't want to box ourselves because that can very quickly then become everybody. When they, they might be boyfriend, girlfriend, but they may not have had contact the last couple of days just because then they might be on different hybrid models and they might be the, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Next up, Antoinette.
Um, great, thanks. Um, first, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Donaghy and Ms. Robtison, Ms. Watson, welcome um to Haverford. And um, thank you for all the effort that you're putting into this. It's it's so important to our community and to the students. And so I really appreciate, you know, all the effort that that went into this plan. And to that end, I also just have a comment um before my questions, which um is directly towards the student athletes who wrote to us. So we got a lot of emails, the school board got a lot of emails from the student athletes themselves. And not only did this show their passion for their sport and the community building that is that is really going on in these sports teams, um, but it it just showed that they, that that they're politically engaged, right? Uh, and and so, and I was really proud of them. I was really proud of the community here. So we get a lot of emails um from from a lot of different people and stakeholders and we appreciate all of them. Um, some are are nicer than others, I will say. Um, but all of our high school emails, which I I at one point I was counting and I think I was over 40. Um, uh, every single email that came in from our student athletes were um, were very well-composed, were nothing but courteous and professional. And I, and I can't say that for every email that we get. So um, so I just want to say that thank you for writing all of those and um and and then I I'm proud of this community and I'm proud to uh to have received those and and to be uh to to be in a community where the high schoolers are so involved and and can really speak their mind in in such an eloquent way. I do have a couple of questions as well. Um, so in the plan, um, we, and Mr. Donaghy said how important masking is. Um, in the plan, we have, we have mask requirements. Um, but I do feel like it is a little bit vague. Um, so so the masks need to be on except for when they're actively engaged and they can't have the mask on it. And it says something like that. And I'm just wondering if we want it to be a little bit more um precise on the, on the masking, um, and maybe even just something like mask should be worn, you know, to every extent possible, you know, even to just in further encourage, um, always be wearing your mask. Um, I know, um, you know, my daughter does gymnastics and so they wear them all the time except for, you know, when they flip, right? And so they ca- they need the sightlines there. Um, but you know, if we can just make sure that all of the kids are are, all the students are wearing masks as much as they can as long as it it's safe to do so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we we were.
Um, and then I I also had a question on um whether there is any communication on any sort of anti-retaliation for student athletes that sell for cues. So if, you know, if they have um a a contact, let's say, that that then they're potentially um have been exposed to COVID. Um, or they just have some symptoms and they feel like it wouldn't be responsible to go that day. Um, you know, and let's say it's a game day. Um, you know, i- is is there communication to our coaches, to the athletes saying that is the responsible thing to do and you will not be penalized for taking yourself out of that game?
Yeah, I think, I think the 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 coaches have have been great with the kids and and sending the message that you know, your health is is the number one thing. Um, and then they've been doing a great job too with the students. Even with the all the emails and all of of saying, you know, let let the administration and the board, you know, do what they have to do and try not to tie them up too much with with your uh, with the emails. So that, so I think the email, it's great that you brought it up. That was like a coordinated effort through booster clubs and coaches and and different things to properly um express your opinion. And and that's with uh the masks and and doing the right thing with games and and attendance. I think it all goes hand in hand. You know, if if you wouldn't have one without the other and uh the coaches are doing a great job. And and we meet with the, I mean, Vanessa meets with the coaches all the time. Uh, and then I meet with the coaches also, um, you know, a- at least weekly just to get their, get their uh feel for things. And and they've been, they've been great. They've been, they've been really great.
We're also doing a a training with with them tomorrow night. Um, and I I think that that's a great thing, just to reiterate, we we have talked about it, but I I think that's definitely something I can add to a point of emphasis to make sure that um, you know, we're we're being inclusive, but also recognizing um and acknowledging how positive it is that someone's being honest and and protecting the safety of others around them. That that ga- al- albeit games are important and I I was an athlete myself, I love games. Um, but our safety is uh the most important um piece that we need to take care of.
Right. Okay. Well, great. Thank you both so much.
Next up, Kristin.
And I just want to say before Ms. Larson starts, I blame the English teachers for teaching the students how to write persuasive essays in any of those emails that you're getting. So that's Ms. Sacks's fault.
That's okay. They can keep doing that. That's fine.
Sorry, Ms. Larson. It's okay. Um, so just a few questions.
Yep.
I know that each school district um within our league will have its own health and safety plans. And um there may be some differences between those health and safety plans. What is the plan for us to kind of reconcile, um, you know, our competing school districts' health and safety plans with our owns, with our own, when our teams meet one another in competition?
So ea- each school is responsible for pre-screening their athletes prior to getting on a bus and going to a competition. If anything comes up in the screening, athletic directors are going to call each other right away. Um, additionally, uh, it seems like the temperature of the room was whoever has the uh sh- sh- uh more rigorous uh standards that uh the other school would agree to do that with them so that uh we can again maximize playing opportunities for students.
Yeah, and that that includes uh, you know, the nuts and bolts of the plan. Also includes spectators. You know, we want to be very respectful. Uh, our league's a great league and and there's a lot of competition, but there's also a lot of camaraderie. So we don't, we don't want to say, well, we don't do that at Haverford or we don't do that somewhere else. So we're going to respect uh other teams' decisions and adhere to what they're doing as as much as we can.
Thanks. Um, so you mentioned spectators. What are the restrictions around spectators attending games um and distancing and numbers of attendees, et cetera?
So so that's on our agenda uh to discuss uh Wednesday. The athletic directors have a meeting every Wednesday for the foreseeable future um through through COVID. Uh, so that that's on our topic for Wednesday along with sched- like we have to create our schedules and and do those type of things. Um, the current guidance from the P I double A is that uh we are still to continue operating with the 250 and 20, 250 outside and 25 inside. Um, and as you know, some sports, the athletes alone um with coaching staffs and officials can take up that 250. Um, because that that's training staff, you know, that's game workers, you know, um, for for whatever reason. So we're going to have to have a more pointed conversation in what does it look like? Um, is it different for sports? Is it same for sports? We have not, we we were tasked with such a large task last week that we weren't able to dive into the fan conversation, but per P I double A, as of right now, we're to stick with 25 and 250.
Yeah, and then we've had discussions, uh, very low-level discussions right now about live streaming some events so that parents can see the game, you know, see the games if they're not permitted to come to a game or they're not permitted to come to every game. So um, you know, we're we're talking, we're we're trying to figure out ways that people have the opportunities to see the games and keep everybody safe at the same time. You know, the goal is to get athletics off the ground and then we're hoping as they progress, uh, we'll have a little more freedom uh to do different things, whether it's an example might be just the senior parents can come on senior night, you know? I'm I'm not promising, it will not be Friday Night Lights like we know it. I I know that's not going to occur. Um, and that that's absolutely not going to occur. It's not going to be five bucks and you're in. It's it's going to be very structured. Um, and that's a disappointing part of COVID. Um, but I want it to be upfront and honest with everybody. And but we're going to figure out ways to to have people be a part of things. Um, the technology's great, filming things is great. Um, not guaranteeing everything's going to be live with uh with Harry Calas as the announcer, but um, as long as we can, you know, capture those historical moments, I think that's what, that's what people want the most.
So I know earlier in the summer, or it may have been late spring, um, we spoke with Ms. Mathers from CHOP. She's the head epidemiologist in one of their departments. And she had discussed the different types of masks um that are out there. And the one mat- type of mask that she kind of warned us against are the valve masks where um, you know, someone is wearing the mask and it actually exhales their their breath. And I know those valve masks can be more popular with um, you know, athletes or just really anyone because they're more comfortable. You can, you can exhale that breath, um, but they're not safe because the whole point of the mask is to keep it in. Are we looking at specifying maybe the types of masks or the types of masks students should wear or should not wear? Um, just for safety purposes?
Yeah, we haven't mandated it, but we're going on the recommendations. Uh, I think Dr. Rubin said something similar to in one of, one of the uh you know, one of, one of our webinars. Uh, so we're, we're recommending, most of the students right now, uh, some of the some sports, they just have the traditional blue mask. Uh, we have plenty of them too that we we can give out to students. We have not seen a lot of valve masks at all uh with our athletes. Um, and we've, we've met with the coaches about a month ago and that was one of the, one of the points of discussion. We have seen some gators and we're, you know, we're hearing things that the gators aren't the best out there either. So that's, that's a point of discussion too and a point of discussion with the Central League.
Okay, thanks. And just one final question. Um, Ms. Robtison, you hinted at the training, a training that's being provided. So um, I'm just curious how this document is being communicated to student athletes and um to families and to coaches, just because there's so much important information um to make this work within it.
Right, so we'll communicate out uh with our coaches tomorrow night. Um, assuming the the plan is approved. If if it's approved, then we'll we'll use the actual document. Um, if it's not not approved, then we'll pivot and and adjust. Um, but yeah, we're we're going to emphasize all the main points with with the coaches and the coaches will then meet with all of their teams and provide the training to to their teams um after having it with us. Um, I also would like to, uh, as soon as I get acc- I I I think today I got access to um School Messenger. So I I too can um emphasize the um, the plan and points that we're focusing on uh to students directly and and parents also. Um, because we can, we can pull out each team and not send it to everyone and just uh send it to specific teams. Um, you know, we we recognize that there needs to be multiple means of communication.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Bridget.
Hi again. Um, so when COVID first started, and I think that was one of, you know, the first thing that started happening where the sports events were canceled, both um for youth activities, and then you started to see March Madness canceled and all of that. And um, I was someone who maintained like, oh, you know, it's still always got to be a good thing that our kids are out running around and exercising. Um, and I'm glad that we've been able to find a safe way to do that. And as um Antonet said, the students letters really reiterated the all the other benefits of being on a team and the discipline and working for a goal and the friendships and and all of that. Um, but you know, as we watched the kind of evolution of COVID over the summer and and the changes to the schooling plans and all that, I appreciate that. Um, you know, our first priority has to be on on being able to get our kids in school um to learn and that sports are kind of a a nice extra to have. Um, and it seems like the indications are that our community virus levels um support both of those things at this point. Um, and I, you know, I I think that's important. And other things, as we are looking at the possibility of a fall season or a modified season were um, you know, was a concern that if we start the fall season and there's a a COVID issue, um, that it's not like we'd get a do-over and say, you know, okay, we tried it in the fall and we weren't ready. Now let's like push it in into the spring. Could you just speak to a little about the kind of the strategy? Because there was a central league effort to have everything be in twenty twenty one. And now we're going now, it seems like, you know, things are aligning for the coronavirus kind of in the community to support it. I think there's it's advantageous to take advantage of the weather, weather and the field time and stuff like that. But um, can you just speak a little about that decision process and the trade-off and and um what, you know, what the risk is to trying to start now?
Well, it is, it's now or never for fall sports. So just to be uh again, completely transparent, this is it. So if we start and something happens that goes against the trends, you know, we're knocking on wood. But if something happens that goes against the trends and they they shut shut it down, it would be like it was last spring where you you don't have fall sports and you move on to the next season. Um, so the um, there's a lot of pressure to do, you know, get to get sports off the ground now and and get them working and uh and get them working well. But if we get three games done instead of five, uh, my my feeling is, and you know, this is me speaking, that uh, the league will not revisit playing in the uh, playing again like after the new year. So you know, we're we're, our hope is we can get as as much in as we can um and have those experiences. But if we have to stop and it's a hard stop, uh, the reality is we probably wouldn't then play up an Arby in uh February. You know, that that season uh would be over.
The PIA double A has a calendar of events and this plan affords us to meet their calendar, um, which is essentially what we really have to follow. In order for them to have created a hybrid model, they would have had suspended their calendar and created a new one. And I believe the number was with OD- over eighty percent of the state playing. There was not a lot of push other than our central area to create a hybrid model. And even if we did get a hybrid model, there was no, there's no way of knowing what kind of winter we'll have and if we could even have played games. Um, in addition to we the with there being no hybrid model, there is no opportunity for the fall to get pushed at a later date. Like, just to reiterate, it's now or never.
Yeah, I I appreciate that and think it's important for people to understand that and um you know, to make the best efforts to comply with the health and safety plan, because that seems like our best best path to being able to have a season. And I agree, the idea of trying to do winter or do fall sports in in March seems like that was going to be tough. Um, so I I just wanted to end my comments with an appreciation for all the coordination that's gone on behind the scenes. Um, the other thing that as I was thinking about the possibility of fitting sports in um was the idea that Haverford, it didn't really make sense for us to be kind of making these decisions on our own and trying to conjure up something. So I appreciate all of the coordination um that's gone on uh with the Central League and all the different um schools that participate. Um, and I also think the community should acknowledge that um, this is probably not um in this time of all of these decisions that are affecting schools. Um, not necessarily the one that we would have picked to have everybody spending a lot of time on. Um, but um, I do appreciate the coordination and know that it means a lot to the students um who have been working so hard and I um, I do hope that that all continues to go well and that we're able to have this opportunity for them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, Ari.
Welcome, Ms. Robison. Robison, um, thank you for this work you're doing. I think it's really important and it supports uh student athletes and their health and well-being on and off the field. Thank you to the Central League and thank you to Chester County Health Department for revising their guidance on sports in the Central League. Without that revision, we wouldn't be at this really great point in time where we can see our student athletes returning to their fields of play and having a fall competition. I also want to thank you for creating this document. Um, the previous plan was in template form, so I think this is a much better way for us to move forward with an actual plan. Will it be posted to our website in case people who aren't in attendance tonight uh can go to our website and see it?
Yes, sir.
That's great. Thank you. That timeline's really important um and helps people better understand what's happening and when. Go forwards.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I just want to add that the uh the twenty-five person limit for indoor events and two fifty for outdoor events uh that uh the governor uh has specified were ruled unconstitutional uh by a federal judge last week. Uh, the Wolf Administration is is appealing and has requested a stay of his order in the meantime. But also, uh, the state legislature passed a bill that would specifically have given uh local school boards authority uh over the uh crowd limit sizes. Um, and the governor, as he had promised, did veto that bill late this afternoon. So that's where we are on crowd sizes and we'll follow along. Um, I'd like to thank you both very much uh uh for for your uh time this evening and for all the work that went into this health and safety plan. And please pass along our thanks to the coaches. And we realize the the kind of effort it takes to put these things together. And uh, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda. Dr. Ruchi.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. So I'm going to talk with uh with the board this evening um about moving forward and how we can transition to our hybrid model. Before I get really into it, um, I just want to mention, similar to the comments that Dr. Brennan made. Um, Dr. Rubin spoke this evening uh during a webinar for parents across Delaware County. That webinar has been recorded and will be on the Delaware County IU website tomorrow. As soon as we get the link, we'll put that on our website and send that out as well. Some of the questions that um Ms. Deacon read to us earlier this evening by, you know, by parents or addressed uh by both Dr. Rubin and his colleague, Dr. Coffin, who was with uh with him on that on that webinar. At our October eighth meeting, we have Jean Casner from the Chester County Health Department scheduled to come to our meeting. And Jean will also address some of the topics that were were um raised with the uh questions that Ms. Deacon read earlier. Jean is going to talk to us about how the Chester County Health Department will be looking at data when we call about a case. Um, what their decision-making process will be, if they will be advising us to close a classroom or to close a building. Uh, so she'll explain a little bit about that to us uh to us that evening. So moving forward, um, speaking of Chester County Health Department and the uh some of the data that is there. Uh, this, you may remember, we talked about this uh at an earlier meeting. Um, these are the metrics that have been created to guide schools to take a look at what instructional model should be in place in the in the district. And you heard Dr. Rubin, one of our board members, asked this evening um of Dr. Brennan. You you know, is there a possibility that we would be looking to transition uh, you you know, throughout the year? And yes, that is a real possibility. Uh, that we could be, we could have to go to one hundred percent virtual, either at a particular building or, you know, at the district. They're the decisions that the Chester County Health Department will guide us in in making. But the metrics that are here help us to look at when is it deemed safe by the Chester County Health Department for us to be in one hundred percent in person on in our in our schools? When is it deemed safe to clearly be within within hybrid? When in the virtual or hybrid, maybe a little, a little bit of both, and then when one hundred per hundred percent virtual? Uh, so those those metrics have been pretty clear to us uh as we've been looking at them and they suggesting that you look at three consecutive weeks um of that. So as we move forward and look at our transitioning process, um, when we talk about transitioning uh right from the Chester County Health Department, it is recommended that we do it in a staggered graduated way, beginning with our youngest of learners, um, our special needs um students who receive high level of special education supports. And we've already started with some with some of that. Um, most recent uh document out of CHOP Policy Lab last week, which is actually the title of it, "The Window Is Opening For More Safely Resuming In-School Instruction." And right within that document, um, they're talking about the stabilization of the data, and that's what we'll take a look at tonight, how the data within Haverford Township and also the positivity rate across Delaware County is be stabilized to the point where we can take a look at beginning to transition uh to our hot, to our hybrid, you know, to our hybrid model. So where are we now? Uh, you'll note, recall in that first column, that's the incident rate. So our incidents within Haverford Township uh have gone from a high of forty-six, you know, to a low at one point of twenty-four. But it's been between, you know, within those four weeks time span, uh, we never went above the forty-six nor below the tw- the twenty-four. For the positivity rate within Delaware County, uh, you can see that while that did increase, it has also, you know, also decreased. And that's what Dr. Brennan was referencing as stabilizing. Um, the differences between, you know, three point nine percent, three point one nine percent for, you can say that we've pretty much stabilized in our county at around four four percent. So let's look on the bottom right-hand side there. Let's look at that um set of matrix again uh that guide where we can look at in terms of our instructional model. If the only thing we were told to look at was the positivity rate in the county, we would be one hundred percent in in person. Because to be one hundred percent in person, if you're only looking at positivity, it's lower than for lower than five percent. Um, we are definitely lower than five percent and have maintained that. In order to be one hundred percent in in person, you need to meet both of those target points there. What a positivity rate of below five percent and the incident rate that is less than ten per one hundred thousand. So look, considering everybody back in the building, uh, we're not nee- we are nowhere near that right now. So we're between moderate and high. And I'll remind you again, while while the time when Dr. Rubin spoke with us and said, you need to look at that band that is there. So the band for moderate incident rate, if it's greater than ten and low than four, lower than forty, combined with your positivity rate, you could look, you know, look at your at hybrid learning. Well, we don't have the and, all right? So that's and that is that's there. Then if we had and you know, we would be def- definitely would be um a clear decision for us. Well, when we look at the high community rate, that band that is there is greater than forty and lower than eighty. And that's where we are. We're at the lower end of that incident rate band. And our positivity rate is still, you know, a very good positivity rate for us to have. So we feel with that information, and again, the stability of that information, that we can transition to our to our hybrid mo- hybrid model. Uh, as a reminder, our hybrid model is a cohort model that has the students in in A or in a B cohort. Um, that model was selected um out of the uh mid-Atlantic regional work that was done, that the Pennsylvania Department of Education had commissioned. And those models that were studied were viewed to be models where you would have the greatest likelihood to maintain your in-person learning for the greatest length of time. And what was what was recommended, and that document is still on our website, uh, what is recommended in a hybrid model, uh, we would have the greatest likelihood uh with the model of the A B and have, you know, having some students Monday, Wednesday, other students Tuesday, Thursday. Before talking about that, I want to to, you know, remind people, the primary re- the sole reason that we need um the hybrid model is to achieve the six feet of social distancing. So when people talk about other schools and what other schools are, you know, are able to do, we can't speak for those other schools. We have no idea what their facilities are like. We have no idea the square footage of their classrooms and how many desks they can accommodate in those classrooms when they are maintaining the six feet of social distancing. We have a responsibility to do all we can do to keep our students and our staff safe. And that six feet of social distancing wa- has been made very clear to us that that is extremely important. So that's what puts us into this hybrid, you know, half of our student population one day, half of our student population another day. For the most part, our cohorts have been identified um by alphabetical order. And we do know that we're going to have to have some staggered um arrival and dis- arrival and dismissal um just to make sure that we can maintain the traffic flow, the arrival of students at at the buildings and making sure that they don't congregate in large groups uh when they are arriving there. The specific logistics around things like that will be communicated by each of the building principals to the parents and guardians of of the children in in their schools. We, the picture that is on here um is our reminder of the classrooms where we remove desks uh in order to create that six feet of, you know, of social distancing. I also have that picture on there as a reminder for me tonight uh to make a few comments during my remarks. We have received communication, we had, our principals have had conversations with a few parents, you know, who have said, I chose Haverford online, but if you're going to go to hybrid this quickly, we're going to switch over to hybrid. That classroom that is pictured right there is filled. There are fifteen desks in that classroom and there are fifteen children who are scheduled to go into that classroom in our hybrid model. It is not as simple as us taking another desk and putting it in there to accommodate a child as much as we will may want to do that. So I want to make it known to families, we will work with with people as best as as we can. But we did communicate right from the beginning that making a switch from Haverford Online when we move to hybrid may not be possible. So in some instances, people may be told there is not enough room, that classroom is already scheduled to have fifteen children in it. Some of our classrooms only have the square footage to accommodate twelve, some thirteen. So the principals and the lead custodian in each one of the schools spent a tremendous amount of time, classroom by classroom. spent a tremendous amount of time, classroom by classroom, ensuring that we have those, that six feet of social distancing. And unfortunately, there, as I said, there are places where there isn't room if a child is to, wants to make a switch from Haverford Online into hybrid learning. The same is true in certain instances if people want to make a switch from hybrid to Haverford Online. The best example I can give you is second grade across the district. Every section that we have in second grade across the district is at capacity for, for Haverford Online. Now you may wonder, well, there's no classroom, how can it be at capacity? It is at capacity by virtue of the class size guidelines that we, that we use when we are assigning children to work with a teacher and the number of children who will be working with that individual teacher. So I can say for second grade, and there are probably other grades as well, if a family feels they need to leave the hybrid model and they want to choose Haverford Online now, it will be Pearson. It will be the Pearson curriculum, you know, which is mirrored after, after ours. But it will, it does address what we, they did not mirror their curriculum after Howeverds, but it does address the same components that are within ours, meeting the Pennsylvania Department of Ed standards. So there's no diff, no difference there, but the children will not be working live from morning until the end of the school day with a teacher from Haverford Township. There will be touch point times that they will have an opportunity, you know, to work with a teacher, a teacher to touch base with them, but it is not the same as we are offering in Haverford Online right now. And that's why we were trying to say to people in the beginning that the choices that were being made were so important because of all of the planning that needed to go in to, to make that happen. The school board hired six additional teachers to make all of this work. You know, three of them were budget, were budgeted for. We knew with enrollment that we may be needing some additional, additional teachers, but three were not budgeted for. So we cannot keep adding, you know, we would not add teachers for one or two, one or two children, you know, making that transition. We'll do our best to work with families, but I can't stress enough that I don't want people out there thinking, well, I'm just going to do this now and I'm going to transition to something else at a, at a later point in time. Moving along as a, just a reminder, briefly, just to show again the schedule, this was the schedule that Mr. Dunne had shared with us when we had the principals talk about a day and what it would, you know, what this would look like with our hybrid model. Students going to each one of their four block classes, a grab and go lunch. And then the students who are, have been at home that day would have block ones through four meetings with their teachers in class each of those, each of those afternoons. At both the high school and the middle school, we are not planning right now to be, we are not able to serve lunch. And you even, you know, heard Dr. Brennan talk this evening about the challenges around lunch. Even though half of the children are in the school, that is still nine, over 900 children at the high school. And it is still close to 800 children at the middle school. So to have those children, even if you were to take them and say, we'll have them eat lunch in their classrooms, the supervision that would be required of that exceeds the availability of adults to conduct that, that supervision. The custodial work that would be needed in terms of the cleanup along with that and the time in which it would need to occur. Alright, so we're already looking at, you know, how can we get the disinfecting that needs to take place in classrooms before students leave the classroom at the high school and move on to the next room? Then to add the lunch piece on top of it is going to require even more staffing than we have in the building. Once we get back, get into this hybrid model, if we see some, some changes that we can make to that lunch process at the middle and, and the high school and maybe, you know, have students there for longer, we can look to see, you know, what we can do, what we will be able to do with that. At the secondary level, we are also moving to having cameras in the classroom. We're not going to be starting out on, on October 5th with cam, with cameras in the sec, in the secondary classrooms. But we are moving to that model so that, that will facilitate that learning for, you know, for the classes. It will also facilitate if a student is quarantining for, you know, 10 or 14 days and cannot be in the classroom. So there are the things that are also underway and we're looking to do that with some funding that has become available to us through the Delaware County Council. You know, all of these things cost money, those, that's quite a lot to look at those cameras. But with that funding that we received notification of, there's a possibility that we will be able to do all of them, but we're moving in that direction. We're not going to be there on that first day. The middle school schedule is, you know, somewhat modified. And as we said, if we can get students in and keep schools open, that's our initial goal. And then if there's something that can, we can do with lunch, we're happy to do that. Our elementary schedule at home to begin with is mainly asynchronous. There may be recorded or some self-paced lessons that students will be doing to start. And times will align approximately with the in-person instruction. We felt also that one of the advantages to that model is when the teacher is working with the children on Monday to help prepare them for what they're going to be doing on, you know, on a Tuesday. But initially, our focus is, is going to be having that asynchronous learning. It's, is the main methodology for the learning that's going to be taking place on, on those at-home days. Similar to what I mentioned for the high school and the middle school, we get in, we get this up and going, and then we can look to see, you know, how can we begin to expand upon that and have the opportunities for synchronous learning? But on October 5th, it will not be, you know, set up that way. It's something that we would look to, you know, look to move towards. We can, we can move on. Even this evening, Dr. Brennan talked about, you know, our looking at mitigation strategies. I think he called it risk mitigation. On the webinar tonight, Doctors Ruben and Coffin talked about managing risk, balance risk and not, you know, not really overdoing it. So the things that we want to get our messages out, parents to make sure that immunizations are up to date. Dr. Brennan mentioned everyone over two should be looking for a flu shot. And we're doing all of this because we want to keep our, our students in school. Once our school's open, we want to be able to, to keep them open. Social distancing and ma, you know, masking are extremely important. And that will help to get us, you know, to get us through the winter. We're going to have to rely upon all of us, all of us being completely honest about our self-screening at home and, and how we, you know, how we feel that day. If school is going to be a safe place for all of us, we are the ones who control that. We being the students, all staff members and, and parents. We have the opportunity to be able to keep our, keep our schools open. It doesn't mean it's going to be easy. But I think with some, all of these strategies utilized together and a continued emphasis upon them. Anytime you hear the medical professionals speaking, these are the four top things that they're talking about. Immunizations, flu shots, masking, social distancing. The hygiene yet, but they're really focusing on the masks. And as Mr. Dunne mentioned this evening, it's the first thing that we know we will be asked anytime we talk with the Chester County Health Department about a COVID-related matter in any one, any one of our buildings. So just a public service announcement regarding symptom screening. And we'll have this, you know, be sending this home and have it posted in, you know, many different places. But we will be asking parents and we were, are asking our employees, you know, before your student leaves home, you know, look at that symptom list and decide, you know, is it, would it be better off for your child to be home that day? Would it be better, you know, is your child okay to go to school? We need, all need to, you know, try to do this together. So the schedule that we are looking at would have us use October 1st and 2nd as in-service days. Days where we can go over the health and safety plan with our teachers, go over the personal protective equipment utilization, how and, how and when. We've done that with some of the teachers who are back, you know, with some of our special education students. And then look at this, you know, transition, you know, what will the transition consist of? And, and, and for the teachers to, to be ready for October 5th. On October 5th, we would look at our K to three, students returning in our hybrid model. October 12th, the students in grades four to eight. And October 19th, the students in grades nine to 12. That's not a model that's different from what you will see in some other districts. There are some that are, that have a similar model to that. And there is, there are others that have a model that's a little, you know, a little bit different from that. Our building administrators are comfortable with the plan that we are proposing. Sometimes the building layout, the number of administrators or the way students are co-horted can influence a staggered start. So we've, you know, had a question about staggering at the second, you know, the secondary level. I don't know what all of the details of the models in some of those other districts. But in speaking with, you know, with Mr. Haran, our students are going to be in a cohort in the, in the middle school. So there's, there's absolutely no reason to stagger their start and other than to, to bring all of them in. So they're coming in, we have our full support, complement of staff there. The same staff that, that we have when all of the population are in, in the building. Half of the population will be in the building and the students will be going to that one room and remaining in that one, in that one room. And speaking with Mr. Dunne, you know, the reminder that there are many of our high school classes that when you look at the student population, they're not all in the same grade level. So the student, the makeup of a high school class can sometimes be students across, across different grade levels. Mr. Dunne and his staff have plans to look at that week of the 12th and do some things like tours, like they will be doing some small group activities, bringing students in, looking at the possibility of picture day, things like that, that they're going to try and get in one sense caught up on and also out of the way, you know, during, during that week. We also know that at the, you know, at the high school level, that it's quite conceivable if you've got a ninth and 12th grader, that ninth grader may be dependent upon the 12th grader to get to, you know, to get to school. That may, you know, sound like it's insignificant, but it's more, it occurs more than I think people realize. It's indicative of, of our community, our township, you know, neighbors and siblings depending upon one another. You heard earlier tonight and just in talking about athletics, how, you know, they help one another out. They make sure that they can get to practices, they can make sure that they can get, you know, get to different activities together. So we feel that with this, you know, with this plan, we've got the best opportunity to get things up and running and, and remain open. So I'll take any questions, Mr. Kleinberg.
Questions from the board. Laura.
Hi, Dr. Rishi, thank you. I'm excited for the kids to get back in school. But one of my main concerns is what Dr. Brennan brought up about absenteeism. I, I do hope that parents and children really adhere to the, the strict sick policy, but that does mean more absenteeism. And I'm wondering how teachers are planning for that in the hybrid model? I don't know if that's something you can comment on. I mean, it's, it's a little bit class-specific, but do we have any sort of overarching policies on that?
What, not a, you know, nothing is formal as a policy. At the secondary level, we know that that's where something like cameras will, you know, will help in there with, with students who are at home. At the elementary level, it's not as clear. You know, if a student is out for a few days, do we treat that like we would have treated that any, you know, at any other point in time? If a student has to be home for 10 to, you know, to 14 days, that there are some of the things that the building principals and the teachers in conjunction with Jen Saxa, you know, are finalizing this week and into next.
Great, thank you. That was my only question.
Next, Antoinette.
Thanks. Thanks, Dr. Rishi, for putting this together. I really appreciate the, the detail and the scheduling and, and I, again, I'm excited to, you know, to, to get going on, on having our students come back into school. So I do have a couple of questions on the, the virtual days. So I know you, you said, you know, at first, when, when we return, it'll be more asynchronous. I guess my question then is, what, what lessons were learned from the spring that are now being applied to the asynchronous days here? Because I think there was, I think that there was a lot of frustration with the asynchronous learning in the spring. And, you know, I know we've had a lot of in-service days, we've had a lot of time to now, you know, hopefully make that better. And so just to help the community understand, how, how is this, if it is asynchronous, at least to begin with, how is this going to be different from, from what was happening in the spring?
So two things that will, that will influence that. You know, one will be that the child will have the opportunity to interact and be with the teacher, you know, every other day. So if you're home on Tuesday and you're home on Thursday, you've had that touch base with the teacher, you've been in the classroom all day, Monday and, and Wednesday. So that's the first logistical piece that we believe is going to make a difference, you know, for, for those, those two days. The Friday is, should be very similar to what's going on now. I mean, because they're already, you know, already doing, already doing that. So maybe it's more the Tuesday, Thursday, you know, if you will, you know, to, to think about that. The other piece is that teachers have already started and have worked into their schedule. I mean, it's, you know, we've only been in school for a few weeks, but yet that schedule is, you know, has been developed. And they themselves are not going to want to, you know, be backing away from, from, you know, from pieces of that. So they're going to want to keep moving. We also know that we need to keep moving with the curriculum. And that was one of the questions that we asked the teachers for some input around, you know, way back, back in the summer. You know, how can we ensure that within a hybrid model, we are exposing children to and giving them opportunities to interact with more than 50% of, of the curriculum? Teachers working with our curriculum department and Sandy Connolly and Jeff Nesbitt are looking at that also.
Great. And then, is there any consideration to the teacher maybe during flex time or, you know, something like that in the elementary level? Like having a check-in with on those, on those off days, those, those virtual days? Maybe just getting the group together even during like a morning meeting type thing? Just for, you know, for purposes of, of gathering everyone, making sure that, you know, you have access to, to this asynchronous material, there are questions or something like that?
I would say, Antoinette, where you may start to see that happen earlier than other grades would be in possibly the fourth and fifth grades. Because if you think about it, for a kindergarten teacher who may have 25 children that they're, they're working with and 12 of them are in, sitting now in front of that teacher in the classroom and 13 on a Zoom, on a Zoom meeting. That's, that's the example that was, you know, was given to me as why I needed to say, this is going to be okay to be, you know, pretty much asynchronous, at, at least to start for those little ones. So you may see it begin earlier than that, than that at the upper grade levels, you know, where the kids can be more independent.
And then to that end, I mean, because I think that you were saying that with the Delaware County new funds coming in, we can maybe do cameras in a classroom for the secondary level? Is that being considered at the elementary level too, or not at all?
It's, it is a matter of fund- And it's it is a matter of funding. But I don't, I also don't want to say if we had the funding, we would, you know, absolutely do it, you know, right, right away. There's the feasibility, again, it might start at fourth and fifth. Where it would, you know, would be a little bit easier for the for those, you know, for those children, but it is a funding. You know, that that's, we're getting $244,000 from, you know, from the county council and it'll probably all go towards towards cameras just for the secondary level.
Okay, I guess, but it is still in consideration or?
For those upper grade levels at the element, like fourth and fifth.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I guess. My last question is just about reevaluation. So, you know, when when will this, will reevaluation be constant? And so to the extent that, you know, kids or students are going back October 5th and and, you know, we have this staggered. Are we going to have community surveys? Are we going to have even just a survey of teachers? You know, what's working, what's not working? You know, that sort of thing, just so that we don't get stuck in a model that, you know, we came up with in a hypothetical, but maybe, you know, we can tweak here and there as we're moving forward and has the the hybrid becomes the the new normal.
Our first surveys that would go out would go to our staff members, you know, the the teachers who are doing this, working with with the children every day and getting their input on how how they think they can can make it better. And they'll want to, they will make it better. They want to be in the classrooms, they want the children, but you know, want the children back. So they'll they'll want to do things that, you know, once they get in and see a way that they can make something better for the for the students that they're working with.
Great. Well, thank you so much.
Next up, Ari.
Thank you. It sounds like this is the optimal and most feasible plan that you are presenting. And you mentioned that when starting on October 5th, it not necessarily impossible, but not maybe the most feasible for us to be able to also open the middle school and the high school. And that, I think, Mr. Donaghy was looking at the week of October 12th for some tours. Could the same be said for Mr. Haran the week of the 5th at the middle school and his team? Maybe doing some tours for the sixth graders and any other new students to the building?
I could, I could talk with him about that. The I just, I know, and I know, you know, you have experience with with the middle school, Mr. Fleischer, this is going to be very different in that the children are not going to need to know where a whole lot of things are until we get to a point where, you know, we're able to have more movement. It's almost the elementary model in terms of I'm going to go into the middle school for my day and I'm going to, I report to a classroom and that's where I, that's where I stay for the day until I leave that, until I leave the building. So Mr. Haran's thinking was that could be something as we feel that we're coming closer to transitioning to something different, that they could actually do that with such a small number of students in the, you know, in the building. But I will ask him, you know, if there are some things that he could do with maybe some new students. I know he did have some of that during the summer. They did have very small groups of of children come through the building, but I'll ask him.
Very good. Thank you. As with the move to the virtual school environment and Haveford Online, the community responded accordingly, the teaching community responding responded accordingly and the administration as well. There was an incredible effort. It required a lot of hard work and determination and patience. And so I just want to echo that that same amount of determination, patience and effort will be required on all of our parties to make this the most successful hybrid model that it can be. So once again, go forwards and let's crush this.
Next up, Bridget.
I just, you mentioned in-service days on October 1st and 2nd. Can you clarify if that means students are off those days or if there's going to be some asynchronous learning or some anything?
Students are off those days.
Okay. And for, I'm thinking of the high school and the cameras in the classroom. So that envisions a model where in a class of 25 kids, like you said, there'd be 12 in the classroom and 13 zooming in to watch the teacher in, you know, delivering content and and activities while they're at home and then it would it would flip. That's correct. So then is going to be throughout the school that that's the plan? Or is it going to be like each teacher, each block decides if that's the way they'd want to do it? Because the hybrid schedule that we've seen for high school has the in-person from 7:30 to 12:30 and then the kids who are home checking in for smaller blocks of time in the afternoon. But it sounds like maybe kids would be participating in class during the morning, you know what I'm saying? Like.
Yeah, I know. I know what you're saying. It's not an easy answer, Bridget, because we don't have the cameras. So that, I mean, that's one thing. And we know that we will have some. So it may be a teacher thing, like I'm ready, you know, let me, let me explore with this and see and see what I can do and get them, you know, get them out that way. Because we know that we're not going to have the whole building outfitted by even by the end of October.
So, yeah, I think it just sounds like since that's a new iteration and new kind of possibility, it sounds like people should plan for some patience and flexibility as that's rolled out and tested and tried. And that high school kid should be thinking like, oh, they might have to wake up on their at-home days to participate in in those those morning blocks of time and in addition to the and and then this goes to a question that we've heard from some community members about the possibility of recording content that, you know, teachers are delivering. And I can imagine there being lots of technical and storage and and challenges to that. But could you just speak to the thought of the district on making recordings of all the classes available?
So before I talk about that, I would like to say, you know, when teachers, maybe they do a flipped classroom model, so I want, I'm going to record myself in a video explaining something and then there's work that I want students to do. Those videos are stored as part of Canvas. So that, you know, students can still go back and look at what the teacher in the classroom has identified, you know, for for them to work with. So they can put videos into Canvas. The idea of recording the full hour or, you know, hour and 15 minutes of a block and storing and storing that is storage capacity that that we do not have. And at this point in time, you know, we're looking at the limited funds that we have. I would not even recommend that that we move to that in a district of our size to be able to store all of those videos to of from every class and every classroom. So if you think about it at the high school, each classroom has four classes in it. So that that's every single room. So those of you who have been to back to school nights and such, you know, at the high school, you know how many classrooms there are around there and think about, you know, all of that video recording. It's just, it's not something that we have the capacity to store and archive.
Next up, Dave.
Hello there, everybody. First of all, very, very excited to get back. I know a lot of parents are. So thank you for, you know, getting to, you know, for putting this plan together. I I think it's great. I said a couple of quick questions. One of them, we hear from a lot of parents, especially of the younger children, K through two especially, that they had some issues of the very basic workings of the technology, you know, what's what's a window, what's a link? Some of those kinds of things with going back to the partially in-class, partially home. When they're in class, will there be some time given, but you know, you know, one-on-one teachers with students, getting them fully up to speed with those devices? Will there be some, you know, explanation of that, like a quick? You know, thing the morning saying tomorrow, you know, you will go to this link, here's your window, here's your meeting. Will there be some effort to do that to get them fully integrated with this?
Yes. Teachers had even talked about that as as one of the downsides in the spring. You know, was that they had not had an opportunity to go through some of the technology and some of the applications that they were using with with the children. So that they.
Imagine, as I have a five-year-old and, yeah, explaining those things for ABC Mouse and such can be difficult. So I'll make sure. The other question I had is this, because we're going to be in, you know, you know, again, because they'll be in school some of the days. Another another issue that we've heard is that a lot of kids that were staring at the screen all day will get headaches, migraines and so forth. We probably, I mean, I know we want to limit the passing out of papers and passing out of, you know, materials and so forth. But just to help to limit some of the screen time during the at-home days, is it possible to migrate to do some of that, just so the kids can get to take their eyes off of the screen for half hour or, you know, every so often, just to get a little bit of a break?
I am not anticipating that it will be all day long on the on the screen when, you know, when the children are at home. They've got materials and things that they'll be bringing back and forth and in direction from the teacher for things to work on the next day.
Okay, great. And then one last thing, could you go back to this slide, actually, with CCD, it was a CCHD guidelines? The positivity rates and very right there. Yep. I just want to be be sure that parents have the, I want to, I want to set expectations here. Hypothetically, even if we were to get to that incident rate per 100,000 of below 10, and even if we were to get below, you know, and 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 remain at the lower than 5% positivity rate, I think it's important to to point out that the in-person model this year would be absent of a game changer. We have to maintain some of the other standards like six-foot distancing. For our schools, we don't have the room for that. So I want to make sure nobody thinks that, like I said, absent a game changer, absent a miraculous, you know, treatment or 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 anything coming out or 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 major change to to policy in some way. Probably possible. I just want to point that out.
Yes, thank you, Dave. As long as the six-foot is, you know, is something that we have to adhere to. We can't change what we're doing.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I had my hands up.
Kristin.
Hi. So just a few questions. I noticed we have mask breaks on the schedule. I'm just wondering if those are still advisable and if we want to consider lunch or maybe recess time to be those mask breaks or if we're still considering time beyond lunch.
Yes, and and we have been guided by Dr. Rubin and also from Chester County that do mention that. But, you know, Dr. Rubin, that they should be short in duration. If they do occur inside the school building, then perhaps it's at a time where, all right, for the next 10 minutes, we're going to do sustained silent reading or here's something that you're going to work on in, you know, independently. And that that would be no more than 10 minutes, you know, at at length. If they can be tied to being outside, then that's, you know, all the better. So that, you know, they have given us some recommendations or, you know, suggestions, if you will, for that, particularly for the youngest of learners.
Okay, great. And then in terms of busing, what kind of training are we providing students and families for the procedures that they're going to need to get on the bus for the first day back to school for hybrid?
Well, we have two and two adults on the bus now. So, you know, and we have already been transporting to the public, the private parochial schools that are open. So I have had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Ramplin about how that is going. It will make arrival to school a little bit slower that first day. But they will, that additional person on the bus, you know, will be guiding them and actually what they need to do for those those first days.
Great. Thank you.
We are, Kristen, if I could mention though, you reminded me there, we are really could use parent help at the bus stop, ensuring that there's social distancing, you know, as the children are waiting, you know, for the bus.
Great. So I'm just to add to that, is there maybe some sort of communication or reminder that will go out to families, kind of, you know, quick fact sheet or, you know, what to do when getting your child on the bus or ready to get on the bus?
Yeah, we can add that with our, you know, the screening things that you should be looking for.
Thank you.
Laura.
Yeah, Kristen's question just reminded me of another question. Are we providing spaces for teachers to take mask breaks? Do teachers have adequate facilities so they can take a a break during the day with their masks?
There have, there's an area that's identified for, you know, where teachers know there's actually a capacity limit that will be communicated as well for, you know, for that room. It is not advised that if there are other people in the room that they, you know, they move their masks, because again, they're adults. And adult population for, you know, we are equally as concerned. So during, you know, planning or prep time that a teacher has, they certainly can go outside of the building. And I've seen some on one of my visits to Chatham, two of the teachers just, you know, leave the building, go out and take a walk a break time that they had.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Dave, your hand is still up. Is that? Is that?
No, sorry, that was, I should take that down. Thank you. Sorry about that, Larry.
No problem. Any other questions or comments from the board at this point? Well, Dr. Rishi, thank you very much for this evening and for for all the work from you and and your staff to put put this together and we're moving on.
Moving along. Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Larry, is it worth mentioning here that the board will be voting on this in at a future meeting?
Yes, I'll get to that.
Perfect.
Next item on the agenda is a board liaison committee report. Is that policy?
No, Mr. Feinberg, I don't, that's just a standing item that is on there, but I don't believe we've had any liaison meetings since our last board meeting.
Okay, that's great. And I take it there's no additional superintendent remarks?
No, but thank you for asking.
Okay. The next item is for information purposes, only the secretary to submit for insertion into the minutes, the proof of publication regarding the schedule change for the board meeting. Next item, I'll accept motion to approve dispersments from the funds as listed.
Kristen, move.
Read them in a second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
I had a question. I see that the capital projects fund balance is related to the track. Could we get a status update on that new surface and its completion?
I don't know if Bob knows any more than I than I do, but I believe that is supposed to be finished by the end of of this week. The painting of the lines is the last thing and whatever they were, whatever time period or duration they had to wait in order to do that is complete.
Thank you. And I did notice that in the general fund bill list, there were lots of items that looked like they were kind of curricular related. And I wondered how many of those were maybe new vendors or or new things that the district needed to get to adapt to our virtual platform this year and the extent to which any of that was COVID grant funded.
The majority of those are, with the exception of the of the one that was for math, the majority of those purchases are COVID related. If they're grant funded, I'm not sure. I'm not sure, but we can certainly get that that information for you. And the Quitts Town expenditure, that's the agreement with Quitts Town where we have the reading interns coming and we utilize them the equivalent of six days, we can each week can be utilized for substitute teaching.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, just I imagine there were lots of behind-the-scenes purchases and and supplies and materials to get ready for this unusual school year. And just just pointing out that we're seeing those now. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, I'll accept the motion to approve the proposal from the Protection Bureau for security at the New Linwood Elementary School project.
Larry, I think we have to vote on the on the last.
The bill list, vote. The bill list, vote.
Did we move in second on that?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you and thanks, Bridgette. I'll accept the motion to approve the proposal from the Protection Bureau for Security at the New Linwood Elementary School Project as recommended by the owner's representative, CB Development Services, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $354,844.57.
Kristen.
Minji said.
Not a move than a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the lease agreements between the school district of Haverford Township and identified childcare providers for the use of designated spaces to provide childcare services as specified for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Minji, move.
Kristen, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Can, can we just talk a little bit about this and there was with the thing that happened with the Y a few weeks ago, can we put, talk about this and just put it in some context about what these are for and what's happening?
So I believe the first one that's listed there is for FSS, Family Support Services. That is the same agreement. It, it has COVID language added to it, but it is the same agreement that we have always entered or they have always entered into with us to provide before and after care at our elementary buildings. They will do that as they had, you know, have done before. So on the day that a child is in the school, they can have access, you know, services for before or after care. Families will be able to register for that. It will be what, on the days that the children are, are in the school. Similarly, the program, the Y is the aftercare for elementary children that has been run the last couple of years over at our middle school. It is only for the elementary children in, you know, service in our district. That's, as I said, it's the way that it has always been run in the past. The new agreement that is there is with knowledge points. And knowledge points will be providing opportunities for childcare for staff members, children of staff members. And we're hoping to, you know, to be able to offer that as a way to assist many of our teachers and possibly other staff members who will find it difficult to come to work if they don't have an opportunity to get childcare somewhere. The employee would pay for it, you know, the, the district is not subsidizing that in, in any way. There is a reduced rate for that rent and in turn, they are charging, you know, a reduced rate for these, you know, for the staff members. With that, so that's, that's the difference between the three.
For the, the staff arrangement one, what ages of children is that able to accommodate and approximately how many children? I think there's four classrooms that are available for them.
Knowledge points is already in existence in, in Haverford County, one of the local churches. They rent, you know, rent space from them. They only do kindergarten through eight, kindergarten through fifth grade. So, you know, they don't, they don't provide for younger children, preschool aged, you know, aged children. And the space with, you know, the social distancing that will be required there, the maximum that they would be able to accommodate would, would be 40. That would be the maximum. And they've already been in to take a look. They, you know, understand the social distancing requirement.
Okay. And you mentioned, I think you, you referred to it as FSS, the Family Support Services. The lease that we have is with Elwin. Are those two different organizations or?
The Elwin, Elwin is the body, you know, the, the parent, if, if you will. And we refer, they're known as Family Support Services, but they are a division of Elwin.
Thank you.
Any other, any other board comments?
I, I just had a quick question on the Elwin agreement. And it, and it provides for cafeteria space in each of the elementary schools. I, I didn't see it, but, but is it's also that they can use the outdoor space? Because I know in, in previous years, actually the majority of the time, you know, they use like the playground and things like that.
Yep. Yes, they can, Antoinette. They all, as you indicate, they always have. And that's not something that we ever listed and, you know, charged them a usage.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to accept the resignation as listed.
Kristen, move.
Second, Minji.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to accept the appointments as listed.
Minji, move.
The second. Moved in second. Any discussion?
One of the attachments here is related to the fall sports coaches. Can anyone just explain if this is a similar kind of allocation of staffing, coaching resources that we've had in prior years? Or if it's been adjusted because of this COVID schedule we just talked about with the health and safety plan?
That is the, the similar number of hours to previous years.
Any other questions? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to approve the leave requests as listed.
Minji, move.
Agreed. Thank you.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the educational service contracts as listed.
Kristen, move.
Fourth second. Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the educational contracts as listed.
Minji, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to accept the recommendation of special counsel and authorize the resolution of pending special education administrative proceedings as listed. Intermus.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll accept the motion to approve the health and safety plan for the return to athletics.
Boy, should move.
First, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
In our information session, we were walked through a, a version of the plan that had some updates and clarifications in it. I don't believe that's the one that was attached to the agenda. Can we confirm that the one we're approving is, is the one that's been updated per the info session?
Yes, that would, that will be, and that would, that's what will be posted on the website tomorrow.
Did we vote on that or just for moved in second?
Need a vote.
I'll need a vote.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Board reports. Antoinette.
Um, no report other than, everybody, go get your flu shots.
All right.
No report. I look forward to the days ahead.
Dave?
Just wanted to say, Antoinette made a great point earlier about the emails from the kids with the athletics plan. That was, those were, those were a lot of fun to read. I mean, they were very polite, very nice. And this is, you know, proof positive, civil action definitely pays off. So hope that, that really hits home that if you, you know, push for something, it does work. So thank you very much. But other than that, no report.
Great. Laura?
Just a quick report. I'm registered for advocacy day, which is on the eighth of October, which is the same day as our school board meeting. So I, I also teach that day, so I'll just attend as much as I can. But I'm looking forward to it. I really enjoy the one in the spring. And we have a lot to advocate for right now. So I am looking forward to that. I'm also registered for the, the two-day PSBA conference. Again, one of the days is a teaching day, so I'll just attend as much as I can. But it sounds like one of the keynote speakers is specifically speaking about diversity, inclusion in the curriculum. So I'm looking forward to that keynote as well and learning from the speaker about what else we can do. So.
I'm just want a second, that second Antoinette's point that we should all get our flu shots. My family got theirs this week. It's quick and easy to do. And it's, yeah, just do it. It's important. Thanks.
Sal?
Just a huge thank you to the administration for the work that's been done to help the transition and to prepare and, and advance. Thank you for all the work that is still yet to come. So thanks to everyone.
Susan?
I really want to thank my colleagues here on the board. They've asked all the right questions. They've listened, they've read, and they came prepared to do what's best for our kids. And for that, I thank each and every one of you. That's it. Thanks, Larry.
Sure. Bridgette?
And I wanted to say that I know, at least in my household, I am really excited about the health and safety plan for sports and seeing that resuming, go forwards. I get my cowbell out. I get to go take pictures, hopefully, if they let spectators in. So I am looking forward to that. In addition to what Dave said about, you know, speaking up, I think the other lesson here is that it is a community responsibility to keep the virus at bay and to practice all the safety and mitigating practices that we can with masking and hygiene and distancing so that we can have nice things like kids in schools and kids in activities. So I encourage everyone to keep that up. I know I'm someone who every Friday at six o'clock is looking at the health data link that gets updated and cheer when our numbers have, have stayed in the right direction. So I hope that continues. And just wanted to give a shout out for the high school back-to-school night that I zoomed into and was able to meet my kids' teachers and hear about the plans for the year and, and the curriculum and all of that. But also got a sense of, you know, what they're dealing with, with the Zoom. And I'm sure a lot of grownups on, on this have a lot of Zoom time in their lives these days. But I think one thing that we can do is while the school is in the virtual mode is to encourage kids to participate in this new format. That was one of the pleases that the, that the high school teachers had was, you know, that they go into the breakout sessions and it's a little awkward or uncomfortable for kids to participate. And I think that's something that we can do is to encourage kids to dare to try this, you know, to engage in this new format and get the most out of it and help their classmates and help their teachers make the online learning as robust and meaningful as possible until, you know, they're able to do those in-person sessions. But the, the Zoom back-to-school night was great. I missed getting to, you know, walk the busy hallways and navigate around that big school. But it was a good way to, to get to touch base with the, the teachers. Thanks.
I want to thank all my board colleagues. Great, great questions this evening. Good work by the board and certainly want to acknowledge all the work that the board and the administration have been doing for the past six months and are continuing to do. The board met prior to this meeting for an information session to review the athletic health and safety plan. And our next meeting is a special meeting on this Thursday, the 24th at 7:30 PM here on Zoom for the purpose of voting on a transition to move to our hybrid model. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. Words moved. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Good night.
Night.